I, does the city have a person or do they?
We don't, well, we don't have to do, we don't have any financial thing at all. I don't know how that works for that person.
Nice.
Yeah, I just know that she said that we would allow them to have a space like that. So they put their computer on this part of the stuff.
Yeah, I don't know if you got a, yeah, I didn't see it.
Providing a seat?
Yeah. Stone is on the front.
I have.
I'll send one to you.
Without me.
Okay.
That's great.
Right. Try to be on the way to chat. Try to be on the way. Thank you for those.
It's just number two or it's number two or.
Oh, and there's.
Number two. All right, is it seven?
Yes. Okay.
All right.
There she is, I just saw her.
Recording in progress.
Right.
Turn on your mics.
All right, uh, seven o'clock, I'm gonna call some people in order, we're in the city council chambers in Sheridan. Um, Ivan, Hugh, Carl.
Yes, George.
Here.
Acus, here, Buckles.
Here.
McElroy.
Here.
Hebert, Hodgins.
Here.
Houston.
Here.
HHH, yeah.
All right, uh, stand. All right, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands our nation under God and individual with liberty and justice for all. All right, so, uh, additions or deletions, um, there's no presentation. That will probably be June third. I can give a little bit of background, just so nobody's about to surprise, someone contacted me about they're wanting to put a solar farm out on Gopher Valley. The city of Sheridan to, um, basically be the beneficiary of the energy credit. So, um, I need to know a lot more information, but, um, she's interested in presenting to the city council, so. That will be probably June third. Um, okay. So, first, what period should I read a little down here? Okay, all right, first public, comment portion of the agenda is the opportunity for the council to listen to the public, but not for dialogue. Public is allowed to three minutes present information relevant to the city. Topic slash issue brought up may be referred by the council to the city manager for inclusion on a subsequent council agenda. Council has the discretion to ask questions after comments are concluded. Please know complaints should first be addressed to the appropriate city department and or the city manager prior to directly addressing the council. All right, uh, let's have you go first.
All right.
Hello, I'm Joe Neely, WPT, also known as Alex Contercy, I'm not gonna read the entire document, but I have one in front of the mayor. And I have one I can pass out there. It's basically in reference to the press media policy that is committed, um, or tried to be. This is what I'm gonna be reading from the reporters committee for freedom of the press. Um, it's a very lengthy, um, URL, so I'm not gonna bother doing the twenty within percent twenty code, but it says who is covered. The Ninth Circuit has historically applied a liberal standard when determining who has standing to invoke the reporter's privilege. Instead of focusing on the professional affiliation of the person invoking the privilege, the Ninth Circuit usually focuses on whether the privileged claimer had an intent to disseminate information to the public at the time he or she was gathering information. Hence, the critical question is whether the person seeking to invoke the privilege has the intent to use material stopped gathered or received to send information to the public. And whether such intent existed at the interception of the news gathering process according to show and eye. And, uh, that was reversing the remand, the reminding of an order that held an investigative reporter in contempt refused to divulge information that was gathered for a book. When I'm going to skip to reporter, Ninth Circuit does not explicitly define the judge reporter when deciding whether an individual attempting to invoke reporter's privilege has standing. Ninth Circuit usually determines standing based on activity of an individual claiming the privilege rather than on the professional affiliation of that person. Therefore, there is no need for the court to formulate a definition of such a term according to show and eye. And there's also AL of the Ayers. And that that one is finding that investigative reporter's book management failed within the journalist's privilege regardless of whether the author was employed in the traditional print or broadcast media. Hamilton v. Hart, noting in Decker that NBC News was protected by qualified journalists privileges for documenting footage about a state prison. Salazar, the city of Phoenix, recognizing the television station video and audio recording for subjects to journalists privileges. I'm not gonna pop up editor, but I will go over to photojournalist. The Ninth Circuit is not explicitly linked on the term photojournalist. When deciding whether an individual attempting to invoke reporter's privilege has standing. Ninth Circuit determines standing based on the, on the activity of the individual claiming the privilege rather than on the professional affiliation of that person. Therefore, there is no need for the court to formulate a definition of such a term according to show and eye, following the Second Circuit's reason in Von Berle. And I'm gonna go ahead and skip to others, including non-traditional news gatherers. The Ninth Circuit also allows some non-traditional news gatherers, but not others, to invoke the reporter's privilege. In show and eye, the court allowed investigative book author to assert the privilege. The court found that the privilege was not limited to reporters employed by the traditional print or broadcast media. Because the purpose of privilege does not solely protect the newspaper or the television reporters, but to protect the activity of investigative reporting. More generally, according to show and eye, adopting the Second Circuit's reasoning in Von Berle. In that vein, a district court in Washington allowed a student journalist writing for a graduate school magazine with intention of writing a book about the same subject later on to claim the privilege. In MNSB City of Chicago. Likewise, a district court in California also permitted a podcast series and corresponding production studio to claim the privilege with respect to, to release interview recordings. There's a lot more, I'm not gonna cover the whole thing, but here is a copy. If anyone wants to look over that. Thank you.
I already read it. Okay, all right, um. All right, now we have, uh, Mary Houston.
Hello, I'm Mary Houston. Um, I am coming today. Uh, ladies and gentlemen of the city council, I come to you this evening to discuss the implementation and management of city codes, specifically nuisance codes. There has been a recent surge online in complaints from the city citizens of Sheridan regarding code enforcement. I personally have taken issue with the way code enforcement has handled complaints against my family. There have been false claims and also claims of inspection which did not occur. But I am not here to talk about myself. I have received comments and messages from people talking about the claims of violation against them. Things like complaints about weeds in the back of their property, overgrown lawns, stacks of wood the city has claimed were a danger to the public. Vehicles the city claimed were non-operational but were actually driven daily. I've had folks message me to tell me they are one step away from homelessness. We are all feeling the pain of continuous inflation and rising housing and utility costs. In Sheridan, according to the twenty twenty U.S. census, in a population of six thousand one hundred and six, the average household income is fifty-six thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars. The employment rate is only fifty-four point four percent. The median age is thirty-eight point nine, and we have twenty-three point eight percent that are disabled. Twenty-eight point five percent of the population are single moms. Twelve point four percent fall below the official poverty level. However, another site talks about living in Sheridan. Bestplaces.net claims that living in Sheridan is seventeen point six higher than the U.S. average. To live comfortably in Sheridan, Oregon, quote, "A minimum annual income of sixty-five thousand dollars, eight hundred, sixty-five thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars for a family is recommended." Let me remind you again that the average household income, sorry. In Sheridan is fifty-six thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine. Many of the citizens in this small town are struggling to make ends meet. Things like buying gas for a vehicle or even a loan can cause a great financial strain in these times. Maintaining vehicle registration can feel impossible to achieve. Many folks rely on RVs to house family members who are one step away from homelessness. I ask the council today, please consider the difficult financial times this town and this nation are in the midst of. Let us reevaluate the methods being used to beautify the city. Our forefathers rebelled in his England due to persistent unfair taxation. Their idea of a free nation meant freedom to live as one is born and meant to live without unnecessary intervention and oversight of the government. Let us shift our focus from policing the public to protecting their interests, to creation of resources, and at the least, investment in businesses and local recreation. Many code op enforcement officers have found great success in first contacting the resident and having a conversation before issuing a violation. This shows discernment and care on the part of the officer. This is one of the changes we ask to be made. Thank you.
Okay, now, so you counsel meeting ends for April fifteenth, and the voucher directory, we can vote on most of those. Yeah, I just have those two. Okay.
I make a motion that the council approve, we can, so, yeah, I'm gonna have.
Second.
Wait, first and second, any discussion on it? Okay, all right, uh, all favor. All right, that's the end, okay. Um, votes for the voucher directly, directory bulletin board expense.
I make a motion to cancel, approve the voucher directory bulletin board expense if those presented.
Certainly, all right, first and second, any discussion?
Would like to know the, uh, you know, greater detail what this is for.
Uh, I believe it's because Liz, uh, has been writing for the bulletin board. Um, so, since we break it up like this, um, instead of her abstaining from the entire voucher directory, she's able to just abstain from this one, um, expense.
My question is about this one expense, so I'm sorry, I'm not about that.
That's why we, it's separated from not tired.
Oh, oh, why, why are we paying the bulletin board?
Uh, yes, that's what I, I, my question is about, you said, we're, we're in the discussion part, so I'm just interested in what the chart is.
Usually when we have vacancies, that's where they get posted, as well as other patients. I'm not sure if we do ads, but I know we do job postings. Do we do ads?
Well, we also have to post like, or we pay for, so the planning commission one has been running, and so is the park and recreation committee one was running for a little while. And then we also have had, um, your thing that went out, I think that that was for May. There's a, anytime you want, and there's a file right out here, and we just pull it, and you can look at it, so right after this council meeting, you can see the, the detail.
Sure, I just didn't, I wasn't quite sure what it was, I didn't necessarily have a question of what.
Yeah, so this is a, yeah, you're.
But that's, but yes.
Is that what you're asking, what it was for, like the detail?
Yeah, I wasn't sure what this, this bulletin board was about.
So this is a good thing, I posted, like, Jim sends me a list too of all the questions that he has before the meeting. If you're interested in that, that also something I can do, so I just scan a copy of the invoice before the meeting and email it to you.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, we can go ahead and vote then, all in favor? All right, uh, any abstaining?
Okay.
All right. Liz abstains. Okay. All right, department reports. Uh, sheriff's report for April twenty-fourth, um, I believe they gave us both reports, so the, the short one and the super long detailed one. Is that, is that okay, is that what?
Yeah.
Okay. We always, always do just the short one, but I, I kinda like the long one, because it shows everything.
Jim? I must say, there is a lot, a lot of stuff, and then they, uh, pulled the past, but you're on the twenty twenty-three in there, and they're voting on all the redisplays.
Oh.
But, uh, regardless, I was just noticing on the summary that, uh, unfortunately, we've got two great complaints that you're looking at. But my question about this, they mentioned curfew, and I wasn't aware that, uh, Sheridan had a curfew. Is that a new thing, or is it just a missed?
I thought.
I thought it was just, yeah, for minors, except what's the, kind of, I don't see. I like that. That was a big thing when I was a kid. Um, do you, should we keep the twenty twenty-three, you know, detailed reports in there too, or?
I have no real opinion, I think I would put your twenty twenty-fourths. Like you say, it is interesting to see all the different things.
Cause it's, it's one thing to compare the direct numbers of what was going on, it's another thing to compare like in detail, because it's completely different, you know, situation. We can keep both.
Yeah, I don't see anything wrong with keeping both, I just didn't have to try and compare, I, I don't know, I could mentally process comparing all of these versus the, this month, so. Yeah, I was looking at that.
Any questions? All right, we move on to public works report, I think Gary's on there, um, if they may have any questions for Gary or.
Um, underwater, um, it says, the sentence is, "We closed the bypass valve on the spring and are now taking as much spring water as we can get." Is that right?
Yep, yep, during the, during the winter time, we have to open it up a certain amount because there's, uh, too much pressure coming down the hill. And that's when you get, when you see a lot of that, the bubbly Alka-Seltzer looking water, that's, uh, when that happens, so we have to open a bypass valve to relieve the pressure and flow.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, I have a question about the three vendor stalls. Is that like cement slabs that are being set up, so if there's an event at Southside Park, there, there would be vendors?
Yes.
And they would have electricity, are there electricity posts or whatever?
Um, I don't exactly know how electricity is done, but it will have electricity at each vendor post, so that's if it was like a large scale event, like a disc golf tournament or something. Then there can be food parking areas or something out there. That's for all future, future stuff, but while we got all the electricity opened and everybody down there, we wanted to take advantage of that.
How'd you? I noticed, uh, it says we only had one water leak, which was on, see, this one, how did we detect the, the water leak here?
They called me four thirty in the morning, and it was about, shoot, about thirty feet in the air.
Oh, no.
It was, it was a good one.
That's what you call a visual.
Yeah.
A geyser.
All right. Our new equipment didn't tell us about this one, it's just a geyser, like, open it full.
And then.
Go ahead.
Um, I, the full-time part quote, is that gonna be someone that, you know, we have to put together a whole plan for this, and then we'll have to bring it to the city council. Okay.
A little ways off, but the city staff is growing more excited about it, because we do wanna be able, we're thinking of ways to really protect our investments down there. And to be able to, um, maybe entertain, you know, somebody unlocking the bathrooms, um, earlier at the city park over here, so there's, we need to put together a whole proposal for everybody to consider. But we do want people to start thinking about it.
Yeah, that's a great, we like the idea, yeah. And it might give someone.
And it could be super, it could be super helpful, as far as like keeping water clean and, and, they, they knew how to keep them always out.
Right, it's a good, having eyes there all around the deployment.
Yeah, especially if they're close to the prison too, we would like to think of all that, so we'll put together a proposal for everybody and.
Sure, sure, there's a couple other cities or counties that do this, the one that comes to mind is Polk County.
Yeah, Amity does it.
They do, and I know Polk County does on their fairgrounds, it's a good idea, because they're right on the line.
Yeah.
Any other questions for here? You might have some later. Okay, uh, all right, so, moving on to, uh, library directory report. I believe you want it in background.
Yeah.
Do you need to remember it?
No. Good evening, do you guys have any questions on the report that was written, or?
Good. Good.
So, um, I guess I shouldn't men- mention names, but when the person goes on maternity leave and you hire a part-time position. And then you said that they will, um, transition to a part-time schedule, are they gonna share a part-time? Is it one position, full-time position, and two people will be sharing it?
Yes.
There'll be two part-time positions?
Yes.
That's what I'm asking, okay. All right, I just, I just wanna know if you were adding a position, okay.
Well, that is a goal in the budget.
Oh, to add a position, so full-time and part-time?
Or just full-time? We're working, well, well, I guess the budget's released today, so now I can talk. Yes, so the goal in the budget, for the budget committee to review, is for there to be a full-time person for this to transition into that. That was, um, that's gonna be very helpful, because when we have people that go out on vacation or they get sick. It becomes very difficult, um, to keep enough people, because we like to have two people at all times, uh, in the library. And we continue to have staffing issues related to that, and the library is growing in demand and growing as a community resource. And we wanna be sure that we can keep it open as much as possible, as you heard, as it is in the P4, so that's, that was a priority. And if the budget committee says yes in the council, then we've done it, so. Some of the things we'll see in there, we're very excited about.
Just wanted to say that it's, uh, amazing to see that the numbers you have, you should be congratulated, it means it's a very welcoming. Plus, the place, especially the meeting room, it just seems to have gone a hell of a lot.
It has, and thank you for that, yeah.
I think it's great.
I'm gonna add or add, uh, unless I missed it over here. That library is gonna be at hometown days, um.
Yes.
Full days?
Uh, definitely Friday, and then we'll be in the parade on Saturday. So.
Is it, um, since Friday's a new day this year, but, uh, what's the, I guess, the plan? Are they just gonna be at the, the park?
We'll be down at the park, we're hoping to have, which I haven't, um, heard back yet, but we're hoping to have a performer actually for the library down there.
Okay.
So.
Will be kinda similar, like what, um, normally like having a booth over there, just.
Uh, we will have books and stuff there.
Okay.
Yeah. To give away. So no parade entry? This is gonna, we're discussing what, uh, like, what the city offers for hometown days, do you have a parade entry in the street? We will, so, uh, we've decided since we're gonna have a new employee on board, and we're also doing Friday night, that we're just gonna do the parade entry and not the booth on Saturday. Okay. So. Yeah, and it's hard to be in all the places at one time with three staff members, so.
Well, I know it's usually around the time of the summer reading program.
Yes.
And that makes sense that be where the, the kid, kids parade.
Yeah, and we figured that was more important to do the booth thing with the kids, so to get the summer reading promoted, everything.
Because, uh, once again, the, uh, school district did not get funding for summer programs.
Oh.
We're, we're, we're number one hundred on the list, and they're funding the top seventy.
Oh.
Their criteria, their criteria is odd this year, so.
Yeah, and we will be doing the laser dispense again to our district, so I know that will be impressive, and the kids really enjoyed last year, so.
And book bags.
Yes. Always book bags.
Great, uh, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
All right. Code enforcement is next, all right, so we have questions about?
Yeah.
All right, go ahead, Liz.
So, there's a lot of pending toes, I think there's a total, I think there's twenty-six total pending toes. I'm curious at whose expense, the owner's expense, the city's expense, or how does that? I guess, let me ask that, there's twenty-six pending toes.
Most of them, people move, they're cars. And some of them, yes, do get towed by a tow company. And then, there's two ways after you tow the tow company. One is that the person can go pick it up and they pay for it, or two, the city gets billed for the tow cost. And then the, there's a whole process that goes through with the tow company, and they can resell or dismantle it or whatever, but, yeah.
Okay.
It's very expensive, but I will let you know that that is one of the number one complaints that we get from people in neighborhoods. Is about people's cars sitting on the side of the road, and it is incredible how long some of them have been sitting there. So, but yes, we do give people ample notice beforehand. And we work really hard to find everybody, work really hard to find the last registered owner. It is also amazing how many people after they pick car don't register it to their name, and when we contact the person, they say, "Oh, I sold that a long time ago," or whatever, so.
Well, actually, it says pending tow, but they, and it also says that they're abandoned, they're abandoned vehicles, so what designates an abandoned vehicle?
So that's just the, uh, that's just what the code, that's the, the title of it in the code. So what designates it is after you get a sticker on your car and it's sat there for more than seventy-two hours, which, we give seventy-two hours and try to find them and work with people. So if people say, which we've had, quite a few people just say, you know, I've got so much stuff in the, in my, you know, front of my garage, let me move some stuff around, or I've got a car, I need to move this around, and so we let them make those accommodations, they just have to stay in contact with us. Uh, and so, but if we have.
So they're technically abandoned.
That's just the word that the code uses, and so we can't choose our own words, we have to use the words that are in the codes. So abandoned is like something that you have to see if it is abandoned, and the way that you see if it is abandoned is you put a green sticker on the car that says, you know, essentially. This car has been sitting here for longer than this period of time, which is seventy-two hours, and we say, you know, move it, right? Or, um, basically you have to move it or call city hall to make it right. So that's the process, so if nobody plates it, nobody moves it, then it's officially abandoned. And then there's a whole legal process that you go about after that, where you have to be very careful, you have to dot all your i's and cross all your t's with that process. Cause it was somebody's property or is somebody's property.
There was a couple, uh, next to, it was, it was, we go down bridge, it's up to the right, um, for that duplexes, there was like three.
Yeah.
One of them had a broken window.
Right on that.
I, yeah, I, but I think what happened in, I'm assuming those cars were declared abandoned, but it's, I believe it's because the, um, the tenant was convicted and they're going on their town, and they just left all three of their cars there. Although I don't think, I don't know, I, that's, I'm assuming that's kind of what the, that kind of determines whether or not it's abandoned, is whether or not someone is able to move it. I, I mean, I also saw, I saw a sticker on a trailer, and I think it's been moved, so that's not an abandoned, but I guess that's just.
General rule is if it belongs to you, it belongs on your property, so keep private property on your own private property. You know, that's how to think of this stuff.
I'm curious.
Proxess.
Oh, go ahead.
I was told a long time ago that the city doesn't owe you a parking place. So you can use it, but not permanently park there, it's not yours, it belongs to the city.
Well, I'm trying to find my note on the article, sorry.
While you're, while you're looking, yeah, while you're looking.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
If you, you said that the, uh, code case, when a vehicle is determined by, I'm assuming you get a complaint, and then, or you, or you drive by it, and you drive by it sixteen times or something, and then you decide to put a sticker on it then? And then if that, that sticker says you have seventy-two hours to live it at that point?
Yes, at that point.
At what point does it become like, I guess, a case that's, uh, you're called cases here, code enforcement cases?
So the second you put the sticker on it, you have to open a case, and I think that the definition of case may mean different things to different people, but essentially what case means in this situation. Is if you come back into the office and you have taken your pictures and you enter into the software, and that becomes a case, it's issued a case now.
Oh, okay, cause I, I'm just curious, cause there's, it seems to be. Oh, okay, because I'm just curious, because there's, it seems to be a code violation, was it my address for a jumped vehicle, which I never received any sort of notice or anything, and I also don't want to have jumped vehicles, so I'm not sure.
We can follow up on that one.
So.
I know about the complaint, just thought I'd commit.
Okay, all right.
So, where are you going next? Okay, so um the RV, I can't find where I wrote down my question about the RVs, but I think there's six RVs, is that right? That have been towed?
You know, I don't know off the top of my head the exact number, but I think I have.
I read, I read somewhere in the packet that six RVs have been towed, and that's at the city's expense, because they've been, they truly have been abandoned, right?
Well, not all of, if they have been towed and they do not get picked up within a certain amount of time, yes, the city's on the hook for at least a portion of that bill. What gets expensive with the RVs is when nobody comes to get them, and then they have to be dismantled. A lot of these older RVs that get abandoned have asbestos issues, they've been used for criminal behavior, and so they have drug paraphernalia in them, and that just skyrockets the cost for all of that. In fact, it is so difficult to find somebody who's even willing to do that, a business. And so we have searched high and low, essentially since I came here, in November twenty-one, which is two and a half years ago now, we, it's taken us a long time to find uh people that have that, even that licensing that's required to do the dismantling. But all the cities are being faced with this, the ones that have issues with abandoned RVs. So it works best if you're interested in trying to keep the expenses low, that if you see a vehicle, an RV parking near your home or near your business right away, and they appear to be setting up, keep your eye very closely on that and call the police right away to make them make contact so that people know that there is no camping. Here, I think I saw it, because yes, it can be thousands of dollars, like twelve thousand dollars for one RV.
That's where I saw it, was in the, in the financial office, I I saw the name of it.
It's a way for cities to, yeah, it's ridiculous.
I appreciate the new um format, but I I have a request, if we could have the the opening day of each violation so that we have an idea how long it's been ongoing, okay, please, yep.
I'd just like to say a thank you to Andy, we have never, ever seen a report this detailed, this is, there's entire bad question, but the answers are right in front of you. If you had that stayed from the beginning, I think uh it will soon. Okay, I was gonna ask the council something, I'm just curious what your thoughts are, if we want to continue to have the location for it? I mean, that is somebody's, you know, house, I don't know if, what council thinks, if we want to know the exact house or or what the thoughts are on that, it was just something um I was curious about. I don't know what the people, when they might think if they notice this.
That was when I first came, it's been on here, when I went back and looked through, when I was thinking about coming here and I noticed that on there, and then I checked in people at the council, and I had to keep it on there for a while, but this is a newer council, so there's some people are. So I am also eager to know the answer to that question, of course, he's having the street, is the street?
This is, it's circumstance, he said he doesn't have a junk vehicle there, so there's a wrong address possibly, and he hasn't been notified. So he's taking the heat for a pickup vehicle that's not his.
Yeah, so.
I think it's important that we have transparency on this.
Yes.
This says publicly what exactly we are doing.
Yep.
And to do what happened, so that if parents, people want to look at it, if you look at it, we can say this is what we're doing, so I.
You agree with what? Keeping it?
Yeah.
The way that it is.
Okay. I was sure that's a deniability.
It also, it also helps you identify if I had an issue and I didn't get rectified, that I could turn me in at your house because that car's still parked out there, but you know what I mean? But maybe Liz had, you wouldn't want to have reporters, two or three, because nobody knew whose house you're identifying.
Yeah, I just want to know what everybody thinks about that. We can keep a lid on it.
Or, in Leah's case, as Danny said, if it's the wrong address, you can also take care of the situation.
Only you should know by the person that it's registered to, the fact that it's parked in front of someone else, you have nothing to do with it.
Somebody I worked with, I mean, I you mentioned it, somebody I worked with, she sold her car, and a new person never registered it to them. Matter of fact, I bought a car, uh and it still had washing complaints on it, I thought that was weird, and it turns out the guy I bought it from never registered it to himself. So I had to destroy it, so that was kind of interesting, but sometimes that happens. Anyway, okay, um any other thoughts on law enforcement?
I have a little, just a little FYI, because they found one of my cars in Salem, and called me up, and I said, you know, I sold that car. So when anybody ever sells a car for their jump, make sure you take your copy and file it with DMV, because that way when they come after you, they can't, because you've already filed your piece, even if they don't file theirs, and then they just park the car in front of your house and leave it there.
It's actually a law that you have so long to file.
Some people never do that, though.
Yeah, actually, actually, like one of the, a couple of years ago, school districts sold some of their cars to surplus, and then we got a traffic light picture that said, hey, your car was ran a red light, and we sold that two years. How do you go ahead?
I was just gonna say that I would like to draw for these attention to all the zeros, as far as much we are working with people, so those are the amounts that are levied in the sense of, or probably levied, I guess.
Funds aren't being levied.
Yeah, fine, potential, but.
Well, they are being levied, they are being collected.
Yeah.
Is that right?
They are, yes, because we're, we very much try to work with people, and we totally understand exactly what Perry was saying, and that is a big piece of all of this, is trying to help people and to communicate and to be as wholesome as a process can be. So I agree, it is very important, and it is really important that if people, I like to encourage people that they should help their neighbors or go visit with their neighbors, you know, so if they're complaining about the long grass with their neighbors, maybe it's time to go check in with your neighbor and see if there's something that can be done to be helped out, because everybody loves the idea of living in a small town, living in a small town also means that we help take care of each other.
So instead of filing a complaint, maybe you go check in on them.
Yeah, I always tell people, things change when you start to involve the government in your neighborhood, so be sure that you really want to make that complaint.
Uh I am kind of curious about the the letter, I can come in tomorrow and ask you a little about it, I'm kind of curious about the letter.
The for, the different, the different templates and things, well, we can put those in your packet too, if you'd like to see some.
If you want to have this, I was curious.
But. I want to reiterate this somewhere here, because that's what you were concerned about. The goal of the council, and I'm comparing it from our last meeting, is not to find people and make them a financial hardship, it's to work with them to come into compliance, to even to extend the timeframe, they have whatever it takes to help them. And it's, the goal is not to levy or what's the word, fines on people. It really isn't, and if you look through the packet, it's zero for fines, all the way through. No one's actually been fined yet, but there have been a lot of citations.
We even have a judge that was so careful, carefully selected by, you know, Councilor Butler with the different judges, and this was one of the things that was important in the process, was making sure that we found a judge that was community-minded or compliant rather than these. I think we're all on the same thing.
I do, I do understand, though, having to, you know, have a purchase that is gonna help you do some of this, this part. I mean, I just bought a house, I didn't, yeah, I ripped up my bathroom, I didn't really have the money to buy a lawn mower. But my grass was getting tall, but, you know, that's, you know, people in similar situations might not be able to get a lot more. So, but it's, it's good that no fines have been.
Yeah, and it's important, even if you can't go lower your neighbor's lawn, that you ask if they want to borrow your lawn mower. There's different, we also have a nonprofit that chooses to remain nameless for this, but if we work hard to make sure that all those, you know, ends cannot be met, they will step up to the plate and offer some services. We do have a few people in town who've offered to help people undo it.
All right, any other questions or thoughts on that, otherwise we'll go down to say we're at quarter report.
I guess another thing, we do offer also fifty dollars to people, um so they can make money off their unwanted vehicles. So if they have extra unwanted vehicles in their yard or in their lawn or in their driveway, wherever they are, for the road, then if they have the title, then we pay them fifty dollars to remove it, and it's a fairly simple process. If they don't have the title, it's a wash because of the.
There've been many takers on that offer last time, right?
I think we've had two, maybe two.
We need to bump it to a hundred.
So we think they're lying.
I still think you bought that from fifty to a hundred. No correct, well.
You're providing?
Yes.
It's a good deal. It's a good deal.
Okay, um, all right, well, we can move on to um quarter report, unless anybody had anything else. Okay, all right, you go on.
I don't have anything to add except for the beautiful budget packet that is in front of you for Thursday night.
Thank you.
That is there and ready for you guys to take home and start tracking for. We did a little difference, the whole packet is within that booklet, so the first part is the packet, and then the back is your actual budget document, so. And.
You made a grant submission.
Yes, and we, as part of that process, Heidi and I went through and summarized all of the detail in your grant tracking reports. So there's a, now, uh, first page is a summary page of all of those several pages, so you can see out of glass instead of, kind of like the sheriff's report, there's a summary page and then the details, so if you just want to know how much is left or what we spent, you can look at that first page. And while the one, um, how long was it, the O dot one, isn't truly a grant, we're still tracking it as if it were because it's the the money that.
The exchange.
The exchange money, yeah.
Heidi made up, written her budget message pages wide.
Yes, thirteen pages.
I know, I said.
I haven't, I haven't wrote this long enough a report since school.
It was great, sorry.
On the revenue expenditures, I go through some operations, a bunch of huge numbers here that were over a hundred. But I found that you go to the very last page, if you like, you have page one twenty-four of the packet, it breaks down for you how much percentage wise is spent. And if, you know, we're already in May, we still, I mean, a quick average in my head right now, I would say we've only spent thirty percent of each proposed budget, which I believe puts us in a fantastic setup in the future to continue it, and I think that's great. I did find some overages, but they will average out in the same, I don't know exactly what you'd call it, but they're, they're all broken down by categories. Within the category, like personnel services, materials and services, you can average those out, and then a board has to respond, so. Even overages aren't a real problem, it's, they're all over, and then I don't think problems, it's, it hasn't happened.
Isn't part of that money never received in grants but not yet spent?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it's.
A little, a little, but.
Yeah, but as far as percentage of the budget, it's not bad.
Yeah, four point eight million.
Was that the line you're talking about with the interest from the Harp of them?
Oh, no, that was said earlier, there's a miscellaneous interest line that is, truly amazing, since it's quote miscellaneous, it's very large. But that's thanks for having the Harp of one sitting in savings account, apparently it's real good interest.
I'm just curious about that, that interest figure, is that just from this, like how long is this?
Well, so this, this is a, the LG, yeah, so it's a local government investment tool. And most cities and most counties belong to it, not all of them, but it's a, it's an account essentially where cities can keep all of their, a savings account is really what it is, and it earns a much higher interest rate than you would on any bank account, and it also has very low fees, so it's a, it's a service of the state government essentially.
So that interest is, listen to that report though, how long?
For, since the city's had money.
Okay, so it's, it's not like this one, it's from the.
Yeah.
The the initial one was, you know, put in there together, right?
Yes, but we do uh look at it on a yearly basis. So yeah, so that would be what we plan for this fiscal year that's in there. Yeah, yeah, we're going to that in the next coming months, about what we're gonna do about.
Any other questions about?
My city can keep it anywhere else.
The um, okay, uh council calendars, yeah, we've got a meeting, should be Thursday, two seventeen.
And Thursday.
Yeah, this Thursday, and hopefully not one the day after Memorial Day.
Yes.
We'll see.
Um, we're hard.
Okay.
That's hard. Usually when you have a pretty small budget. And I will not, sorry, I will not be able to.
Yeah. Okay, um, so next up, city planner report? Yep, you got a question?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, so Laura was our city planner, and now she's our economic developer, and Liam Dean is our city planner. Are they, is this, again, is this two part-time positions, is this, how did, I don't even remember hearing that Laura was transitioning into economic development. I all of a sudden, I'm reading this going, wait a minute, I thought she was the city planner, he's not in his head, so he didn't hear it either.
No, I did hear it.
Oh, maybe I didn't hear it.
Yeah.
So what, did it come up at a meeting?
Uh Liam is a traditional planner, so he is a much better fit, but we contract out, so there's not a whole lot.
Okay, that was an idea.
Yeah, there's not a whole lot, and Laura had already started some of the economic development activities at, when she was in the planning position. And so we're having her finish those up, and there's been some other work that's essentially assigned to her. So she is much more geared and prepared to do economic development than planning.
We're gonna be working with her and a few community members to try and get a plan to recruit businesses to down.
Cool.
Because I'm not sure that there is a plan, so that might be why we don't have new businesses.
So are both of those cog positions?
Yes, they're both contracted out.
Okay.
I believe that you're both, once a day?
Two, oh, once a day, once a week.
That's what I mean.
That'd be a great job.
Laura in general is here on Tuesdays, and Liam is here on Thursdays. Um Liam's position is is mostly funded, greatly funded by development costs, or so people pay for him for his service. So a lot of the funds that the city was paying on the traditional planning is been shipped, being able to be shifted to pay for Laura, but also on a minimalist basis.
Okay.
Yeah, but Liam is a schooled, trained, educated.
Um, I just want to say Laura was part of the strategic goals session, so she's also in tune with that even closer.
I think that's why she keeps, she mentioned goal three, this is what, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, Jim?
I know we've got the asbestos report for uh the two houses we've been talking about forever, but since initial investigation is concluded, so what else can we find out besides there is asbestos on the outside?
Yeah, asbestos in the siding, and then no lead on the other. Yeah, asbestos in the siding and then no lead on the outside.
Black mold?
They said that there is no, the contractor said that they would contact, they would contact you if you have questions about black mold, that they don't see it as a necessary to test for it after they did their inspections, so they didn't wanna cost us extra money. But they'll be sure to, they said if you have questions, they will, they'll work with you.
Jim, I was there, uh, we paid them, so was that cost, that money we paid them, that included the testing they had done as a.
You asked me about that this afternoon and I have not looked, cause I'm too focused on the budget, so I'll follow up and then you can. Total tasks.
The next, um, meeting, I was gonna, I guess we can talk about this when we do, but I was gonna, uh, see what the council thought about trying to, some sort of survey the community and see what they think we should do with that, if it should be, I mean, we can list out all of our options, basically to see what the need is, I guess, and the community, what it could be used for. I suppose, and that could help us with the next, next steps toward what we do. It's, it's, we're gonna burn Morgan, it's too late now, um, but, um, we've got, we've got some time, um, still. But it would be interesting to get that feedback and that input, at least I have that, but, I don't know, go ahead, please.
Well, so the, so burning Morgan is still an option, right?
There's lots of options.
Okay, but I don't understand why we directed Heidi to put windows in Morgan Street if we're gonna burn it. That seems like a colossal waste of money to.
Well, that was because, uh, you, uh, per our code, you, uh, can't have broken windows. So we wanted to make sure our own city buildings aren't violated.
I understand that, but if we're gonna burn it, maybe we could put a big sign on this, the house that says, this is a pet, it's a burn and then.
I don't think that would fly.
Why would we put new windows in houses?
Well, I think, well, well, and that's, and that's the thing, we might not burn it. This could be, this could be, you know, this could be sold as a house, this could be.
Okay.
You know, used for a city, I mean, it's kind of, I don't know that we would put anybody in there for the city, but for us, probably that's an option too. I mean, there's lots of options. Burning is one option, but that's not necessarily, you know.
Yeah.
We agreed upon one, especially since we've surprisingly had offers for people wanting to buy it.
That's what she said.
And that not mill Morgan, the one that was.
Yeah.
Which I, but, I mean, yeah, like Lucy said, people will buy it and fix it up, I was surprised. Uh, who's first?
Danny.
Danny, go ahead.
So, we're back in code, they, they actually made it look like siding where the windows were broken, that looks pretty good. But so, but we've been out of code for over two years and then we're going after people for code violations.
Right, I understand that.
So we, we gotta do our part too.
I get it.
Again, we're not burning it this year, so it's gonna be another year before we get to it, so keep, keep the, the cats out. Keep cats and rats, maybe?
Rats might not be that, cats will correct it.
Well, it's a past business, isn't it?
Yeah. All right, Lucy, go on.
And I think, I believe when you do, do a burn, then they can take the windows out. Sometimes, I've seen the house.
I just have been in.
There was a list of things that they had done on the place and I don't have enough except that they had to be moved, a whole bunch of stuff. And I didn't, it wasn't my list, you know, so I didn't really care, but I remember driving by, but they had took, uh, they took the windows out of the house. Something about windows exploding or something, I can't remember what it was. But that was maybe with the prior fire department and I know they, they changed their rules too, everybody changes their rules, so it's just kind of a. And when I talked to the contractor, they said, why would you do that if you're gonna burn that down? He goes, that's just a waste, a waste of our money. I did ask them if they could maybe be here, but they're out of town working this week, so, but the council wanted to ask them questions.
Jim, didn't we task Heidi in July to give us a cross benefit, uh, graces for the different options?
Yes, Laura and I are working on that, but it'll, yeah, it'll be.
But, but one of the things Laura had talked to me about is, um, getting an idea, cause, and she kinda mentioned it in here, is it's hard to, you know, give a recommendation when we're, you know, we're not really sure what the community needs are. So that's kind of my thought with the survey is get an idea what the community needs are, what they would, what they would like, um, cause, you know, maybe that could be used to meet all those needs, that's based on.
I like the idea of the, uh, community survey, but if I was not here and I've been talking about it for a while, I'd wanna know what's it gonna cost, what, how much is this gonna cost, how much is this gonna cost, so that they can make a decision. Just cost analysis based revenue, saying, oh, we'd love to have that as a, and it's gonna cost us a bunch of, well, turning into a pool probably isn't a.
It's not a viable option, but.
Money came in.
Yeah, that probably wouldn't be one of the options, but it'd be, I think, my, my thought is listing some of the options we've talked about.
I thought I had listed five or six different options and I think, uh, if we're gonna present those to the community, we gotta at least be able to tell them, okay, this is gonna cost this, one, this isn't gonna cost this, it's, uh, you know, working with the, the contractors, we're depending on, you know, we're gonna look at, we could just have, just give this a very rough, we can make sure we're clear that this is very rough, you know, as far as, yeah.
But I thought that would be, it, it sounds like there have been some other surveys out there, I don't know about those locations, but we're gonna try and, I wanna look at all the survey data again, it's not necessarily about those, but, I don't know, might help us out.
Um, under, uh, well, on page one thirty-six of the packet, uh, under the strategy investing in the students drinking water abroad and, uh, staff coordination meetings, continue to begin planning strategy for Stony Mountain. Um, business organ has a feasibility grant opportunity, does that mean we've applied for it, don't know anything yet?
That means we have not technically applied for it because it's supposed to go from a twenty thousand dollar grant to, uh, from this year to soon, to fifty thousand dollars. So we've, we've been advised to wait until it turns to fifty thousand to apply, but the state knows that we want it and they sound like they wanna give it to us.
Good.
So we're just waiting till they make that, um, jump in.
Didn't we know that? Were we told that before now or just you just?
I, I knew.
Just Kale.
Yeah, I knew. But since we were, since we were gonna wait and get hopefully more money, but, yeah.
Awesome.
It is a, it's a kind of a budget.
I, I, this is, I guess, off, but we, we did, I did get notified, um, uh, this, the Sheridan Road project, I pitched to Selena, she's, she's not gonna be funding that. Although I did see that a lot of this year's funding had to do with like water and stuff and we had a water master in the north of Stony Mountain. Maybe that could have been funded, to come up with plans. Next, next year, oh, next year I plan to do, um, Wyden and Merkley, pitch for Stony and also Selena's. Um, unless there's another project that would fit better, but I wanted to do Stony for Selena's this year, but we didn't have a plan.
It's good to work with too.
Yeah.
Um, we, we know we have to get these master plans done so that we have a better chance getting these grants. Cause this is the step, this is what they look at, this is part of that process, so.
Can you do the engineer's meeting this Thursday?
Yes.
All right, I'd like to be there this time.
Okay, sounds good.
Did you just say Selena's did not approve Sheridan Road?
Yeah.
Oh, that's a bummer.
Well, I mean, she can't approve her deny that we're gonna build the road, but she, she didn't approve my, she didn't approve our funding request, yeah. She did approve the Barbara Roberts Career Tech Center, the funding grant, and I am also curious if she didn't wanna fund two projects in Sheridan. That could also be, which.
How much?
I don't wanna compete with my, uh, two point, two point five.
Cool.
Two point five million, but it's not the, yeah, this is like step one of like five, so they're, they're on the list. And, yeah, but it's, the, the, the list has been created, um, they told us there'd be fifteen projects. But there's, you know, New York, Carlton, McVintell, they're all over county, so.
What'd you ask for in Sheridan?
Two point five million.
Oh, so it went to the Barbara Roberts.
That's, that's one way to look at it.
That's valid, I can, real simple way to look at it.
Did you find anybody in Shiggin's?
Take turns, next time we'll be Sheridan Road, Dr. Roberts.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not gonna, you know, definitely be asking more.
Speaking of, uh, when I see this, uh, goal one on the bottom of one thirty-five, recruiting new businesses and you were gonna talk tomorrow, could I come to one of those meetings, yes, I'm very familiar with the downtown area?
Yeah.
Could I have some really good ideas for that, that I think that if we had a discussion that we could, you know, be hyped at?
Yeah, next time Laura's here, um, you and me can meet with her.
Can you just give me a little text and tell me what day that would be and what time?
She helped Austin or she helped this week?
This current week, next two days she'll be here, so I'll, I'll, I'll check, I mean, I'm sure Laura won't, won't mind, but, um, she, you're usually around one or two. Last time I went out with her after work around three thirty, so.
Was it at three thirty in the afternoon on a Tuesday?
Yeah.
Listen to the advice, I see.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, I'll check, but. Yeah, I can check it for her. Okay, listen.
This was probably a really basic question, but why is it on some of the, in the planner's report that it says this item shall not appear on future reports? Especially if it's not a done deal.
I'm guessing it's just they're in a, they're not gonna be doing anything for a while, it's not, is that?
Well, yes, it's like this applicant is no longer interested in everything, like a drop, it's, or moving forward with something else. It's either a fountain for me, you know, there's other reasons.
If activity happens, it'll come back.
Yeah.
I see, okay.
So until, I think, I think Liam was, was doing this because we had the Viola project on there for two years. And it was the exact same statement for two years, so I think, uh, this is Liam basically, there's no activity, we're not gonna.
Keep reading it.
Yeah.
Okay. Keep listening.
So is, here's another question, and I guess this might be for the planners, when it says that, um, that twenty-four dash zero zero three, says that he's interested in affordable housing options, but the subject property is irregular. So if somebody comes and says, you know, I'd like to put in, I saw this happen one time in planning, the developer came in and he said, that he'd like to make the street smaller so the neighbors could wave to each other across the street and, you know, presented a real homey thing. So they allowed the smaller streets and then they put in manufactured homes and it wasn't a cozy little wave that the neighbor crossed the street. And so then it was a process of tying them into what you say. Don't ask for, you know, a favor or a certain option, and then once you get the, for example, reduced size of streets, then you don't follow through with the plan that you said in the first place that constituted it to be made that way. I don't know if those guys do that or not, but whenever I see would like to, that doesn't mean they have to, they just, you know, for example, if you wanted to have an R two, you can get more homes than you can on an R one, cause you wanna have affordable housing, so then they get an R two zoning, but then they put in homes that are, you know, four hundred thousand dollars or three hundred, that's not affordable housing.
Good, so that's what he's considered, is staff suggests the applicant consider developing as a PUD, which a PUD is a planned unit development. And so that means that you're not, um, interested in doing all of the criteria, or the criteria doesn't necessarily make a lot of sense, maybe because of an irregular shape. And so then you have a planning unit and you, the staff report is created and the staff report says, you know, that they're gonna have smaller streets than this or that, right? And that is all recorded in the staff report and you don't get certain things unless all that criteria is met, such as building permit. So you do have to follow through. There might have been some tightening down since that kinda stuff, but that's really more common. I'm talking about like outside other cities too, planned unit development, so it's becoming more common. They used to be, um, essentially only homeowners associations were created of those because people didn't, the developers didn't wanna comply with all the standards. Cities used to say, fine then, you know what, you can just do your own thing, you can have your own streets and you can manage those own streets and you're a part of a homeowners association, but nowadays that's, um, moving more into a planned unit development, so.
Are, are we ready to move on to? Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Can we hear a little more about that grant that was awarded for the river access plan?
Can you say that a little more?
Can we, you say a little more about the grant that was awarded for the river access planning, just to.
Oh, the, yeah, so, all that that is, is, uh, is this, uh, okay. So the national parks, sorry, the city has been working for a long time with other outside groups and has its own volunteer group of people, right? That have been working collectively for a long time to do a riverfront, um, access, so that means getting people to be able to find a spot in the city to get into the river, cause the river runs right through the city, so people will take advantage of it. Not only for local livability and recreation, all the tourism aspects to help boost the local economy. So what's happened there is that the city worked, um, and it was really inorganic and actually a really wonderful process that has happened, working locally with others, especially in like Wilhelmina area, to come together and we showed the state parks, essentially they have like the non-motorized park or program. And that's a newer program for the state parks and, or the, the, I'm sorry, for the marine board, it's a newer program. And because they're just getting enough money in these days for all the paddleboard, they have to register all the, uh, motorized. So anyway, so long story short, we have been getting the attention from other nearby nonprofits like Visit McVintell and stuff. So we've all collaborated together to find different spots and held open houses, like the one you were at, held open houses to find different spots along the river that people would go into. Well, then, at the end of all this, we're all looking at each other like, well, how do we get this going, right? And so we did a collaboration, um, of, of an application that went to the national parks and the national parks has a, uh, grant program that allows for them to send a national park person to the place. So this is purely no exchange of any funds, but a person with the national parks will be located. And I, since we were kinda spearheading, I said that we would locate the parent Sheridan, plus we really want them to focus on Sheridan. So it's in our advantage to say come into Sheridan and I'm really looking forward to the opportunity to engage with somebody that, at that kind of a level, you know, a national park level, hear what they say about our area and what we can do for ourselves, so it is. So they will produce a, a report, the findings and where we go next and what we can do, so hopefully that's a good summary. I think I put in, in my report, isn't there a, this, yeah, this is in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Think about it.
So, uh, if, if us, we're all, we're gonna be getting a national park person.
Yes.
Get them somewhere.
Somewhere.
I thought you said your office, that the school was moving.
I did offer. I'd sit next to the.
We're next to the bridge. Yes, so we'll see them somewhere.
Yes, so the, the, uh, quote statement says, good news grant awarded for river access planning. And S and C grant is a person to come write a report, is it kind of a grant?
Yeah, and the biggest piece is really the collaboration, right? So we've got the county that's interested in having spaces, we've got different cities that are interested, but we also have people that value the river, cause that goes right behind their house, right? And so they can do all that public community reach out that's needed, or all the public outreach that's needed, lots of pieces. It can take a lot of time and a lot of gifts and talents to be able to talk to people about that, so.
How often are they gonna come down?
I, the, those are all the things I don't know yet, but they will be here, like an employee, like stationed out here.
Well, just wondering if, if one twenty-seven was validated, they could actually take one of the offices. If they had taken one of the office faces over there, other three offices, and if they only came in once a week, then they could just have their business set up across the street.
Yeah, that was a thought too.
I think that they're here full time, I just don't know if it's for a year or what the standard is.
Does that make you cheat again?
Somebody have to do it.
I mean. All right, maybe.
Never let go of that phone.
That phone.
Okay, um, here we go on, okay, uh, timer?
As you can see by Liam's report, or I guess maybe not because things are falling off, but he is Mr. Heaver Beeper and he has a lot going on. And he, we talk a lot about development stuff and it's exciting and sometimes it's a total nerd fest in the back office, as I'm sure Kale and Jim can attest to. But Liam's keeping me busy with questions, um, we didn't touch on it specifically out of his report, but on the city got a, or the, excuse me, the COG got a grant from the Department of Land Conservation and Development, uh, for a sort of targeted. got a grant from the Department of Land Conservation and Development uh, for a sort of targeted limited development code update. And so Liam, uh, before he started work on that, he talked with me and I'm sure he talked with Heidi. Just about some points where he wanted input before he went through the work, but he has provided a draft version of what he is proposing be updated uh, to comply with the House bills two thousand and one, three three nine five and four zero six four. And he is trying to get as many changes that might fall within those bills as possible to really maximize those rate dollars. There's also, so aside from sort of that side of planning, there's been quite a bit of um, potential development or development meetings. That's taken some of my time, uh, and then my least favorite category of work is employment matters and union negotiations have continued to take some time, um, but there's a lot going on in the city and unfortunately, all the staff know where my office is now, so whenever they have questions, they, I'm just great, I love to help, but sometimes uh, it's a lot on all of us. But lots of projects going on and lots of questions here and there and all of the places.
What was the house bill that you mentioned again?
Um, it, there were three for the grant. It's house bill two thousand and one, house bill three three nine five and house bill four zero six four. And those are on one, page one thirty-seven of the paper here. Mostly that those are uh, uh, bills relating to changes to housing, to increase protection of housing.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, yeah.
One of them is for the U G B. Now that's just so.
Yeah.
Oh, that's separate, okay.
Yeah.
That's, okay. Oh, right, okay. Okay. Okay, we're gonna move on. Okay. Alright, we got um, geez, the fiber's a little, okay, just. Do I need to read the whole thing or can I just?
Just read it.
I make a motion.
Right.
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash C as presented. I was stuck in it.
Okay, first and second. I have to read it, uh, any discussion? Okay. Uh, alright, all in favor? Hit that, yes. Alright, resolution twenty twenty-four dash G.
I make a motion.
Wha- 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 oh.
You can discuss that for a second.
Okay, okay, okay. I make a motion, council approve resolution twenty twenty-four G. Resolution operating mayor and city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement. The city of Sheridan, Oregon, and the Mid-Wilhelmina Valley Council of Governments for contract services.
Second.
First and second, alright Liz.
Okay, the question I have is, these rates are pretty high. And so are we under, and they're based on population, are, is it based on our city population or does that include the prison too? Because there's a great big difference in the rate there.
Our city population is the prison, we don't get to pick and choose when it benefits us and not.
So we're in the fourteen thousand, almost fifteen thousand, that range. Because if it's population over five thousand, I was just hoping that we keep just the city population to keep the rate, the rate down.
Question, that's something I had to learn when I started here recently, because we don't get to pick and choose.
So the prison.
There are any lawmen?
Oh, she killed, we can't, we don't. Alright, I just, alright, I'm just hoping.
Liz, I think even without the prison population, I think we'd still be sitting on that.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, because this, it is up to five thousand for the ten thousand dollar range.
Yeah, because I, last census, um, actually somebody quoted the number, was it, what, sixty-eight hundred? And we, they've got fifteen hundred up there, so that gave us five thousand three hundred, so.
Okay. You'll find in the budget that we've lost quite a, we've lost the population by three years in time. Yeah, part of it is probably due to the major, the COVID majors out of the F C I.
Oh, we've lost population up there.
We've lost this general, uh, we just know we've lost um, the number of our population projection for the P S U Portland State University of us, and I think part of it is because that um, remember with COVID, they had to kinda separate the inmates for the distancing, so that I think plays into this. But in addition, we haven't been expanding, as you know, for residential, so.
We are.
We, so I have a little section in there about this.
Okay.
That's in my budget list, it's just thirteen pages.
And Liz, just to address that specific number, that's just for recruitment services?
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
That's for when you're recruiting a new city manager or public board director or.
Absolutely, it's a lot. You're sorry.
The only way to look at this, Liz, too, so I believe this is very similar with the school district, because if our city was bigger, we could do a lot of services in-house, we'd have staff, we're doing this, we don't have to pay for a full-time staff member, but we're still receiving services. It's expensive, but it's less expensive than having a full-time person. Which is, we're still be able to utilize some of those services, not have to pay, you know, a hundred thousand per position or anything.
I, I think you wrote that up. You, didn't you write that in your, somewhere I wrote that, to explain that, thank you.
Ross, you do.
Oh, that's what I wanted to explain, is that the fees look high, but we only pay for what we use instead of hiring someone with all the benefits and the extra tax, so.
Maybe someday we can.
It's still high.
It was in the memory.
At least we get, that's where we're at.
We get, okay.
We get quality people.
Yeah.
And a lot of the service, you know, those numbers are passed off to developers. Okay.
Okay, um, so I believe we still have a first and second, do you have a question, if anyone wants to answer, it's a silly question, but uh,
the agreement is to set the start till one July, two twenty-four and then one three, thirty-two, twenty-five, yet down to section three. The resolution is effective immediately.
That might just be so we don't have to, you know, just away, what, hey, we're, we're gonna approve, we just, it's basically that far ahead, that's basically in effect, when they say it's a, you know, it's not a dirty science, I just.
Yeah.
Angela, one is not that far away.
Yeah, thanks for, we don't have to, you know, approve it June seventeen or something, that's maybe. We have to cut you a question.
I have a silly question. So like Laura is, what is she considered on the staff service?
Economic development.
On this one here?
Oh, I don't know if, if she's, she should be listed somewhere.
Page one fifty.
One fifty, oh god. They may call it something different, I, but I understand economic development is fairly new to the COG as far as offering it. Um, it could be coded as something else, uh, but we can find out what um, she would be considered at, looking at this price.
And so she's like, we just pay her five a hour, so we may call. Yes, which is, so, I mean, here's a little, sorry, I gotta, John LaGuardia's sticking in there. Um, so I go to revitalization meetings all the time, and I've noticed lately that Laura's showing up there, and her at night. So do you guys pay her to go to that meeting?
We have to. Well, I mean, we, we have to pay for anytime she goes, and part of what we're asking her to do right now is to get the Oregon Main Street group up and running. So she won't go indefinitely, but a couple of weeks.
I can even go, you know, I, I.
Well, hello, I go to those often.
Well, you, yeah, yeah, you do.
So that's what I'm trying to do, is intervene there, it's, now here I am, and we've not even been doing the budget yet, cutting the budget. Because then I'm thinking, hmm, do you pay her for travel time too? Sorry, that's the John thing. And uh, so I was just wondering, because I go to those meetings all the time and I can tell you what happens in every meeting and and, and you know, basically, you know, she just sits there and listens, I'd probably say a lot more than she does in regards to encouraging involvement. So I was just kinda wondering if she's getting paid to go to that meeting, why don't you just ask, you know, I'll tell you what's going on.
I think part of it is.
And then save that for something else more important that you might wanna pay her, especially if you're paying her travel time.
Yeah, and I think the first initial meeting is more of just meeting people, meeting people who's just, she's gonna be working with, because that's gonna be important in, to turn around, revitalization is a important piece of getting economic development, like since they are in the Main Street program. Um, so I would imagine she's not gonna attend them, you know, forever, she might attend a couple, and just, you know, kind of meet everybody. And maybe sporadically if something comes up or there's a grant that she wants to work on, it would be my assumption. Uh, but I, I thought if she just kind of, you know, get her foot in the door and let everybody know who she is and what she does.
Yeah, because I really haven't heard her say anything, and I mean, she might know that she's part of the city planner, but she just kinda listens, but I didn't hear any kind of encouraging economic, you know, and maybe she's just listening.
She also told me that Las Vegas has been very hometown days, uh, always.
Yeah, yeah, they, well, they did that big cleanup, well, they, what they call their cleanup. It's like somebody said, why don't you and the revitalization, I said, because they just kinda do um, a, a low profile cleanup where what the city does on the A is majorly dinosaur cleanup, you know, and you, because you take junk down there at the end of the barber waters. And when they go around, trying to pick up cigarettes and stuff like that, you know, things like that, so. I mean, it's two different causes, they're both important, they're just two unrelated causes, at least that's what I try to tell folks when they ask me.
Well, this way there's two cleanups too.
Yeah, and, and.
Not just one big one.
Yeah, because we don't go out and clean up the downtown, they bring all their debris to us and then we disperse it in containers, see there this year, I'm just kidding.
We're gonna be at the front collecting donations.
Hey, you're so funny, I'm doing metal, doing javelin with metal. Join me in the back.
No, we're not doing javelin with metal, just so that it's on the record. You will be alive.
I do, I do, I think I won back there, everybody's helping.
It'll be a lot.
Ian's gonna help.
Okay, good, thank you.
Watch out for the brother.
We'll talk about this, alright.
Good luck.
Almost positive that uh, I've worked a little bit with Laura, that uh, I think she is doing a lot of listening, because she needs to know a lot of that, it's gonna work. Hopefully, when the time comes for push comes to show, she'll give me a push in the right direction, because sometimes I really need that.
Uh, okay, do we have any more, can we?
For the COG, is that where we're at?
I think my neighbor's all about it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, alright, uh, all in favor? Alright, excuse me, Anna, okay. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-four dash H.
I make a motion that we approve resolution uh, twenty twenty-four dash H to resolution operating. Mayor and city manager to execute under government agreement, Yamp Hill County, Oregon and the city of Sheridan, Oregon relating contract law and enforcement services.
Second.
First and second. Jim?
Um, this is really expensive, but um, it's not like we have a choice. They set the price and uh, we say, no, we don't wanna pay that much. Who the heck else are we gonna get to do that, nobody? So they set the price and we've gotta go with it, whether we like it or not. Because setting up our own police force would be uh, incredibly expensive, much more expensive than this Laura's number that uh, shows in resolution twenty twenty-four H.
Yeah, in it, oh, in.
I'm curious, has anyone ever recently looked up what it would cost to run a police department, say in a jail in Oregon?
Yeah. It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't pencil out, and unfortunately.
We don't have a building there.
Unfortunately, it's.
Mostly just curious.
Yeah, uh, and unfortunately, there's one more cities that used to have their own department that are going to county, but they recently didn't. You know, Wilhelmina's, I'm sure Sheridan has been contracted, Wilhelmina's been contracted, well, you, you were there, they said over thirty years.
Yeah.
You know, um, I think Sheridan probably runs the same amount of time, I know Sheridan did, used to have one, and it's, you know, it's, it's tough, because you, you'd have, you know, the local, you know, patrol deputies, but then you don't have K, we, K nines, detectives, that'd be a whole extra cost that the Yamp Hill County doesn't provide.
City staffers.
Yeah.
It's just like evident, to really get down into the weeds, I've looked a couple of times uh, before, but uh, recently is a word that makes me wonder about how recent it was, but I'd say definitely within the last five years. So, if that's recent, so if that's recent enough, but yes, it gets very expensive very quickly. We've also looked at the cities in Yamp Hill County that do provide already their own policing, which is Carlton and Yamp Hill, was it Yamp Hill? And the cost per resident, basically, we pay less for that.
Do you recall what their, what Carlton's budget is for police?
I think it's around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, and they, that provides them a little bit more coverage in terms of hours. The big expense that we would incur is, we have nothing, so we would have to buy infrastructure. Exactly, right, so vehicles and uh, yeah.
Yeah, and scale of all that. And we'd have to pay for like a chief or something, and we don't even have to do that, this setup, you know, because they have big, have that all embedded. The H R pieces, we don't have to do all of that, which can get really hairy quickly, so.
There's a lot of um, benefits that are not monetary as well.
And Carlton's also smaller than us, so.
Yes.
I mean, our costs might be more, how, do you know how many officers, officers that it's?
They have three uh, officers plus their chief of police.
And we're paying for three officers, so.
Definitely.
So we'd have to pay more. Uh, Lucy?
So like when I first was on the first council, I had the same thing, you know, why we got our own police, well, we don't have a building, just like I said. And then they really started net pecking it down to the point where I think you're gonna have to pay for the dispatch when you pay for nine one one. The thing of it is, and here's a promise that I would like to think for Sheridan, as we grow and we get stronger and we get like maybe two stoplights, then, you know, we'll be able to, if we retain some of our land, we'd be able to maybe, or find a nice building that could be refurbished into a jail, that hopefully in the future, we can be like Carlton, I don't know why we couldn't, but we're just kinda crippled right now because of our, you know, because we live in a floodplain, if you wanna know the truth, we're building, a floodplain really screws us down to the ground and we have to need a kind of way, way to fight that.
That is true though, because I know like Sherwood, they're about twenty thousand, they have their own police force, I believe, that's.
Well, some of those are not, they use the county.
I think a certain size, it might make sense, because a certain size, I think it does make sense, but right now, unfortunately, and I had the same thought, and I thought about, you know, even contracting with different agencies, like O S P instead, but you know, Yamp Hill, it's kind of the best fit, so.
Just a quick comment, about six years ago, I think it was, we tried to pass a ballot measure to, it would have been a three dollar charge, thirteen, thirteen dollars. Yeah, um, added to our water bill, was that it? To, just to bring another officer down.
Two officers.
Two officers, it failed miserably, I mean, people just did not want the extra charge, so, I mean, it's measured, these have been tried to get more coverage, but it's unfortunate.
Good.
I'm, I wasn't attracted by anything, just so that you guys know, I was mostly just curious.
Yeah.
I actually think that I would prefer, at least personally, uh, I, which my personal opinion is not that important. In this, especially in this thing, which is that I personally would prefer to have that, so, but I, I don't know what the city has done in the past, I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah, that was, yeah, good question, yeah, we, we did recently talk about that, because we were kinda like, wow, there's a lot, but yeah, it was, that's kinda where we landed, was that? But yeah, it was good, good question.
Yeah, it was, uh, it was nice to have our own police force, uh, I live right next to the uh, chief of police, and it's nice you got a problem. Um, oh, okay, take care of it, so yeah, those things are wonderful. Oh, okay, take care of it, so yeah, those things are wonderful, they're just today's economy.
Barney Oakville.
I would like to say that, uh, it is, this year was very difficult to do the funding and so we do, the council. I am going to ask you and push you in the direction of having conversations about the continuous funding. One of the things that happened, um, you may see here, the, due to the point of the union negotiations, so. They have not finished their union negotiations at this point, so there's just a three percent of the city's being charged, but there could be more to come in the future to make up for that jump. So we need to be prepared, we need to start thinking about, uh, you need to either cut programs, you need to cut costs in the general fund. We're talking a lot about economic development, which comes with costs, you know, that is, that's a skill set, you know, and we have. Not a lot of resources because here, so you, when you look into the budget message, I did do a little chart that shows, um, the different cities in Yankton County, their tax rate. So cities, so Sheridan has a lower tax rate at like two, I can't remember, two forty one or something, Will and Minas is four dollars. And so, we, you know, not to throw our cities under the bus here, but other cities also have higher, uh, their, their general city is worth more of all the structures in it, like look at Dundee and even Carlton. And so those are different ways, the only way actually to increase a city is to, you get in from your property taxes, is to increase the value. You cannot increase the dollar amount, so you're stuck with that two, we are stuck with two dollars and forty, whatever, two dollars and some cents, we're stuck with that amount. That's it, but you have to think about ways to increase the valuation and that gets back into this whole thing where we have not done a lot of efforts into growing cities. So this next year, there is a lot of effort being put into place to do master plans, of course, but also to gear us up for all the reports that it requires to, to file for, or growth boundary expansion. But the other option, of course, is to go back to the voters and to ask for money for monthly P.
For a ballot measure.
Yes, otherwise, if you, you know, I, I can't make money, so we're like, we get to the point where we're, it's squeezing blood out of turnips or whatever, so. There has to be cuts in the general fund. This is pretty much the last year.
This isn't to be, uh, mean or rude, but if it wasn't for grants, we'd probably be underwater at this point, but we were just ignoring any project we've got on our mind.
We would just be doing baseline stuff, essentially, there wouldn't be as much in the parks that's going on, there just wouldn't be as much. But this year, we can do what we've been doing, but the next year, I am very worried and then the year after that is very worrisome. Because we have to figure out ways to grow the valuation of the city to keep up with the costs. Does that make sense?
Security.
Yeah, and you don't, yeah, it's just very, you can't, you know, keep applying for, you really shouldn't live on grants for your basic.
Right.
Well, we have our basic, but we, all these projects we got, like the Southside Park, nothing, it'd still be a bomb, right?
Yeah, a beautiful ramp.
I say we vote on ballot measure.
I'd say we take a vote on the Yankton.
Yes, we, we only have an open.
We do?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you again.
Yes, let's vote on that. Uh, all in favor? Alright, let's get down to it. Okay, that was what, H?
G.
Yep.
Okay, so now we're on.
J.
J, resolution twenty twenty four dash J.
I make a motion that the council.
Wait, Roxanne, I'm gonna interrupt you before you make your motion because we have an edit. Because I missed number two, the sections.
Oh. Sorry, sorry, that was my fault. I proved it, so. Which, are we at page one sixty one?
On page one sixty nine.
One sixty nine, okay.
It should read section one and section two.
So if Roxanne wants to make her motion.
As.
As amended, okay, so.
Where, wait, what was the correction on one sixty nine?
Um, so he.
Section one and two, not.
Yeah, that's it.
I saw it, okay.
Roxanne, you still want to hear?
I'd, uh, make a motion that council adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash J, the resolution adopting a news media policy as amended. My second.
Alright, first and second, uh, Ian, you got a question?
Uh, I have a comments. So I'm concerned a little bit about the section four tenants at executive sessions. And I just, uh, wanted to know.
Is that page one seventy two?
It is, it is page one seventy two, yes. Uh, let's see, in deciding, uh, section four, so section I, or A, sorry, uh, deciding. Whether to recognize a person as representative of news media organization, organization, the city may require a press badge. Uh, these requirements here, um, for the executive session. Um, I think it, it seems to me like it's not quite clear. What is actually required for someone to, like, what are, what are the actual required, requirements to be considered, uh, news media by the city? Uh, are part of the reason because it says the city may require under section A.
Because we got three options.
So, to me, that says that they, that they may require any or all of these, um, I don't know if that's what that says specifically.
Oh, so, four and then A.
Right.
And then, so I think any of those three, it looks like, because it says, you know, press badge identification, da, 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 or. Recently published news article, recognized news media, da, 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 or letter, letter F from editor, looks like, um, is that what you're asking or am I more specific as to?
Does the, you deciding whether to recognize a person as representative of news media organization, the city may require, and so what I'm saying is, what does that mean specifically? May require.
And Ian, you're asking basically, does it may require or will require, that's what I'm gonna.
And then do they require all three or just one of these three?
Okay.
Uh, because it's not quite clear to me.
Says a lot.
So I guess if it was, if it was, is, or instead of may, shall, or whatever, it would probably be one of those three.
Or just to get rid of the word, the city requires.
Oh, uh, Danny?
I'm not sure what brought us on, uh. This is an ongoing thing throughout the country. So I, I don't see where we've had any problem with this. Uh, if we should have a problem of some kind, then we could readdress this, but it just has not been a problem, hasn't been for years. There have been a lot of court cases against it, I spent several hours this weekend reading out all of this, uh, mind-boggling. So, this is gonna be left up to the courts eventually, uh, we can't, you know, we can do what we want to do and then somebody says, well, doctor, the judge turns quote, out of the night through the court about this. So anyway, I, I'm, I'm not for this. I don't think it's necessary at this time, it may be later, but at this time, it's not, in my opinion, of course. It's just another ordinance on the books, that we've got plenty of those that don't even need to be there, so.
It's basic protocol, though, when I looked in Newport, I wrote for a publication and I had a press pass and this is basic protocol. If they know you buy a byline and, and you're a regular writer and you, you have a byline, it's just basic protocol, but uncertain, if they don't know and you and you go to look at, you usually have a press pass. So everything that's outlined here is, it's pretty basic, it's nothing new.
Uh, Ms. But. Ian, go ahead.
Uh, I would tend to agree with Denny on the sense that I don't understand why we actually need to ademur to create a new law when this. Is basically already been covered under multiple other government agencies that are higher than us. Um, I would like to point out too, though, uh, this was the second portion of what I would like to say was that chapter nine of the public meetings of the League of Oregon City. On page twenty-two, uh, it says, due to the ambiguity around who is or isn't a quote representative of the media. The LOC voting board, the city recommends that cities generally permit any person providing the public with news, including internet bloggers, to attend executive sessions. Some cities may seek to establish stricter media attendance policy and if so, those cities need to, to undertake a meaningful and in-depth discussion with their city attorney before drafting such a policy. Denying quote representatives of the media, unquote, access to meetings can lead to costly litigation. Um, and one of the things they cite here is, um, the Oregon Attorney General's opinion, official opinion, eight two nine one. Which is Ellen Rosenbloom, uh, the Attorney General of Oregon at the time that this was released. And this, uh, more or less kind of is what there, is a summary of this opinion, which I have a copy of here if anyone wants to see it. However, in the short, in the, the short answers, which I'm sure you guys will be happy to have, uh, question number two, uh, from. In, in question number two, the short answer from the Attorney General's office here is. Are there permissible grounds at which to exclude representatives of the news media from attendance at executive sessions, other than those identified in the relevant Oregon statutes, which is one nine two point six six zero four and section four. The short answer is no, so, um, I guess I'm concerned too as to, um. My concern would be is that I think we need to have more specific language in here if we're going to do this at all. Uh, defining what those requirements would be for situations such as, uh, Joe Neely, our own hometown kind of reporter here. In his situation where he's, uh, someone that's providing these videos and, uh, providing, I guess accountability in a way. Um, by just showing up and, and taking a video of what happens and not necessarily commenting, I mean, he comments personally on things, but the video doesn't have a commentary on it. And I think that's a very valuable resource and I think we need to be careful about what we exclude from, uh. From what is a, uh, uh, someone who's gathering this, someone who has access to the executive sessions, like, and we need to, to be careful about that.
So for the, so instead of like listing currently recognized news media, are you saying, or like, don't list current news media or just have it be news media? Um, is what, with one of those that you cited, um, if I remember correctly, it all, it said you can't limit who the news media is, it's just they have to be news media, is that, is that correct?
It's, it, there is, there is definitions, I guess, for what news media is.
Yes.
There is, yes.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying, that, that we, I think also what Denny is saying is that we don't need this at all in the first place, but I'm saying that. Our own Attorney General has said very specifically that, that we should give consideration to internet bloggers, um, as true members of the press. Even though they, they may not be able to fulfill the requirements in their sub, under section four here.
Okay.
So I'm trying to say that we should be careful about what we're saying in section four because it's very exclusive, the way that it's.
Okay, you used Joe as an example, Joe is a volunteer, he volunteers his time to go to meetings, which is great. And it's a great service to the community, however, he is not affiliated with the news media. And when I read the state statute that you quoted, it said that news media could go into executive sessions. Not to report on what they heard, but to have some background for articles in the future. And that, that, that they would have the historical perspective when they're writing in the future about that same type, that same topic. And that's still covered in this section four, people that actually work for the news media have a byline, they write regularly for a paper, they have a press pass, they have. A letterhead from, and they have an editor or whatever, those things are, as I said, it's basic protocol. Although I think what Joe does is incredible, I mean, he volunteers his time to serve the community, he's not technically part of the news media. And I, I don't understand why someone would go into an executive session and did, spend their time videotaping it when you couldn't disclose it or share it anyway.
I wouldn't do that.
No one's allowed to do that, except for the city.
But that's what he does, that's what he does at meetings, that's what, that's what he does, so, you know, what, why would he go into an executive session?
Jim? Is it already established by law that, uh, a media, or they are, can't disclose what was discussed, which is the topic you said, that's law? And also that they can't use cameras, paper, or cameras to report.
I think that part is true, I think.
That's Tyler, he's here, what is here?
Is it, my understanding was that they technically can divulge, but they.
I just read it, I'm gonna tell you.
Sure.
Um, we're, uh, the, we are required to say specifically what is allowed and not allowed to be reported on. And if they do report on it, there are.
Consequences.
There are consequences.
And Ian, I think, you'll probably know for me, I, I read, I don't know if anybody read, and if we, as a council during the executive session, go off topic. And start discussing another subject, that's when everybody in the media can go, whoa, whoa, they were supposed to be talking about this, instead they started talking about, you know, is that correct?
That is correct, the, the purpose of the media is to not necessarily to report on anything, but to be a watchdog. And I think that's super important for us to have that transparency, and I, I mean, that was another one of my concerns about this, is that the two people that we had listed. I don't care that they're on here, um, what I'm thinking is why is it only these two? Um, it seems like we should have other ones that are pre-approved if this was to be, become a resolution to be approved. Why have we not included, say, whatever the statements paper is, I, I don't read it, but, you know, maybe they would, they would send someone here to do that. However, like Denny said, I believe this just doesn't need to, for us to be voted on in the first place.
Yeah, I think those two were listed just because they have attended, say, the sessions in the past, but that does make sense because there are others, there are plenty other news outlets.
Number three says if they were recognized, uh, from a recognized news media organization like, uh, Oregon Association of Broadcasters, Oregon Publishers Association. They would be permitted to, so it's not just exclu, being exclusive to those, to those two entities. It's saying that if they're a recognized news media outlet, that they would be permitted to. That's what I'm reading in number three, the general, it's the two.
Right, I am aware that that's the case, uh, number two is just the currently recognized ones and I believe it's the point that we actually use them as, uh, for, to benefit of the city as.
Yeah.
To use their services, is that right?
To my knowledge, the Statesman Journal has not appeared here since I've started a couple of years ago.
I'm sure they haven't.
And, that's the statement paper, by the way.
Sure.
And that we're going in, I don't think is reported.
No, honestly.
Thankfully, it seems like.
Well, there is a first and a second, um, if Roxanne wants to keep her motion and call for a vote on this. Okay, uh, alright, all in favor? Two, and those both. Denny?
I'm just thinking.
Okay, we, I guess you can, I guess you can be what? I guess you can.
I'm still absorbed in some of the stuff here. Just asking for a response to simply, I think I was gonna hurt up the question.
We, yeah, we already, we called for a vote.
I know, but you know, you did it prematurely, so that's why I didn't do anything because I wasn't ready.
Just so I'm clear.
I believe that she needs to respond first, as the robust rules orders, since the vote has been made and we are, we have currently voted that the vote needs to be made.
I think that answer would just be a mistake. Can you say, Jim?
Sorry, I'm asking.
Same answer.
I agree, though, that you, you should, we should have maybe waited for you to say something. I'm sorry.
That's the way it works. And I just don't do anything when I get pushed like that.
Right? It's okay. It's okay.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
I want you.
Okay, so number one is, does this, did this limit the media attending via Zoom? Or is there any limit? So how do we know, like, if, I mean, this has happened with News Registry. You've seen him on here and he, I think, just, I don't really know, but we've asked him, you know, are you there? Are you there? And he hasn't been there. And so during executive sessions, we need to make sure that he is, you know, there or he, I'm just saying, he, because usually it's Paul. But so the question is, are, are or is the council going to regulate the news media attending via Zoom because we can't essentially regulate and know who's in the room with them or not in the room, right? Like when you were on vacation and we had to, like, essentially swear that nobody was in the room. There was other things in the room. So how do we know that, right? And then my other question was, did, so does this say essentially, so say somebody comes in here and then it was Jane Doe, right? And we've never seen Jane Doe before, and she says that she is a blogger. So what process? Just so I'm clear, I'm not trying to ruffle any feathers by any means, but I just want to make sure that I am clear as a process. So Jane Doe comes in here to attend an executive session, and how do I know she's not, how do I know she is with the media?
Let's take a look.
Okay, so that's what we're doing.
I mean, I don't know. I think they have, is there, is there a state, like, state rule on this that basically they can't lie?
Nope. If you.
No law that they can't lie?
Well. Um, no statutory definition. There's no way for us to, with no policy, anybody who says that could be here.
Okay, thanks.
I believe, I, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but this, uh, this is a, not law, but this is the Attorney General's opinion from Oregon. If you'd like to have it, I'll look it up to you. But I'm pretty sure that the Attorney General here does have requirements for what is news media and, and in Oregon law, in Oregon, Oregon statutes, I'm pretty sure has some, some definition. It's, it's similar to what's here. It's very similar. It's, it's not the same.
I'm not aware of any statutory definition, but I, if you have a site, I will certainly check.
I'll look at, I'll look up what I was trying to find and get it to you and.
You can do this directly.
To you? Okay.
Jim, I would say that somebody shows up, we've never seen before, and they say, oh, well, I'm a vlogger or I'm a blogger. Show us your blog. Show us your, and if they, it's not up right now. Although it's not up right now, you're not media. I'm sorry, go home.
What, what would you base that on, Jim?
Yeah, we can.
Based on their saying that the reason, how they report is via blog or blog. If they can't show us a blogger or blog, then are they media? Which would bring you.
Currently, there's nothing requiring us to accept bloggers as news media from the state. But there is a definition of what quote news media is. And someone like Joe would not be under those. So we could, under current law, the council could restrict him from coming to executive sessions. However, that, like I was saying, and like the legal Oregon City's packet says in chapter nine, that does open us to potential lawsuits. So I think you're right. We should, you're right. We should have some sort of method to say, is this someone that's actually from the news media, from some sort of news media? That's what I was trying to say. We need to have, we do need to have this, but, but I think we should be open to a definition that's going to be more inclusive to people who are like bloggers and, say, YouTubers, where maybe we might have to examine their terms of service because one of the requirements was about corrections being able to be made. And is there a, a process for that? And there is a process for that, too. So those are, those are just things to consider.
Well, I think in the meantime, as we don't have, don't have bloggers figured out, it might be nice to have something to go by that we could stick with until we found a legal way to allow others, if it comes to that. So I think this resolution is a, a place to start and a place to work from and be consistent on who we are allowing and not allowing.
Jim? I thought we were voting. We seldom have a conversation post-vote, so unless we're gonna have a, a second. If we don't have a second resolution coming, then.
Uh, I will ask if we do want to have, maybe not this exact same resolution, but like Ian said, something outlining, you know, the, yeah, how would you phrase it? The process, basically, if we do want to have something that, you know, basically, um, to show us who or how they are media or.
I believe we said a well-defined process.
Yeah, what, okay. Is that something we would want to do and we can look at, you know, in the future, or should we just not do it? Um, we would certainly do either of those.
One thing I don't understand is, for example, blogging media, Joe video, is if it's an executive session, what good is it because you can't share with anybody? I'm not getting that. First of all, I got a problem with that because I don't get it. Why do it when you can't, you gotta keep your mouth shut? And second of all, I'm for cableing this and bringing it up maybe at a work session because I think there's some really valid stuff here. It says that I can't figure out this, you know, come in, sit down, shut up and don't say, no, you can't share with anybody. So good luck with that. You know, you know what I'm saying? It just doesn't make any sense that all this huff and puff is about something that nobody can say anything about anyway. So, but I think that it's worth reinvestigating. Definitely. I would call it tabled, except like Jim said, I didn't vote. So for me, it's, it's tabled in my mind because I'm still trying to digest this and have it make some kind of sense. And right now, it just doesn't kind of make any sense. Although I do understand it. And I do understand it for privacy reasons with the city.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we are discussing something that should be discussed right now. We're already got through that. That could be brought up at council concerns or moved to a workshop. But we're just spinning on our wheels here.
Right. Well, then let's go to Resolution twenty-two-four-k.
Four, five, oh, got it. One-seventy-three. The main motion, the council approved Resolution twenty-two-four-k. A resolution authorizing First Federal Saving Loan Association to establish a new depository account to designate the authorized signers and for the city manager to provide names of authorized signers and other documents to First Federal Saving Loan Association as presented.
That's second.
All right, Stephen?
Um, yes. I was reading something, whatever that is. My hands raised when I said yes. I've covered both of us. But I don't have any questions at this point.
Okay, so no, no discussion.
Okay. I have to do it.
Not yet.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, well, there's no discussion. Now I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
There you go.
All right, that's it. All right, unfinished business, uh, leak credit. Jim, is this, I don't remember last time.
Yeah, this is your, please, are you ready for this?
Yeah, has this, has this been updated to match what you were thinking?
These, these are my updated figures.
Yeah.
We could correct the amount. I was using the point zero-seven-seven-nine, which is in the example. I'm gonna pick on you a little bit. It's still in the example.
Yeah, it, that was the sample I created when we originally did that leak credit application and ran it through council. It's just been part of that application since. So I apologize for that.
Either way, now instead of point zero-seven-seven-nine, it's point zero-eight-zero-three. And I believe that, with the calculation you showed me, that results of using that process or that weighted figure cost, it comes out the way it's supposed to, using that process.
And we'll update the template.
Yes. Sample.
Sample. Yes.
Well, having read the letter that came with the request, um, I think the city has some obligation to help the homeowner with something less than nine-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents because I'm on the council and I thought our water meters were doing what they're supposed to do, catch leaks on both sides of the meter. And if they were functioning, this person would have talked as much earlier, it would have been very obvious to everybody. And so to have her pay an extra nine-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents when she had, basically, she had the fault. It wasn't on her cell leak. The water was being pushed over to whatever, so there wasn't visible. The only way to see it was through the meter. So I feel we should do that a little better and offer nine-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents as a bill, even though obviously it wasn't better. That's a little review.
You can do that. However, staff feels that the person was contacted multiple times. But we don't have record that we contacted them multiple times to alert them. So we will make sure that we are keeping record of when we are alerting people. But several staff members feel that this person was contacted for.
Jim, what would you recommend?
I don't know. I mean, I just think, having read what the woman said last month, that this poor woman, she was barely spread the by, and we've already talked about sure, you know, having people rated the public level, the sound of that letter is, that's exactly where this woman is. I can't say forgive it. If it were my money and not the city's money, I probably would. I'd forgive it, but that's not for me to say. But cut that amount in half and hope she can pay that. What they said in the letter was that she can't even try and make payments. I would hope that whatever we charge her, we'll offer some sort of payment plan. This might be, she might be able to reach, but I don't have a good figure to respond to. I don't know. I just think less.
So.
And when you're saying less, Jim, you mean a bigger credit?
Yes. In other words, I, I don't want to see her deficit a whole bunch of money if we could make it less through the central system.
So the current credit we would give her, uh, trying to find it.
Nine-hundred-and-fifty-seven, thirty-two.
Yeah.
And then she would owe basically the same amount.
We already did the first, so we credit them half the cost. So the total cost was nineteen-hundred dollars roughly. So we already did half of that, which is the other nine-fifty-eight. So this is the second half of that.
So then she owes the nine.
Yeah. So she would owe the, the balance on her. What I can tell you, because I think the one other question that Jim had on that last report was, there was one more month that was high, and that was November of twenty-twenty-three. And I wanted to make sure that, um, the reason why that wasn't addressed is, first of all, we only address two consecutive months, although there was the third month that was high. Um, second of all, when they apply for the leak credit, they apply for it basically on October thirtieth. November's bill wouldn't have gotten generated till about November twenty-second. And so it was unknown. We had no idea that the November bill was also going to be high. So, um, if you wanted to do something like, well, maybe we'll go ahead and also credit November's bill and then cut this part in half, you, you have some other options that we could do to help provide some relief that would address all three months instead of just the two.
So we could maybe lower it, where she owes maybe four hundred and, okay, a hundred a month or so.
Yeah, we typically leak payment plans. We usually run over, over a period of six months rather than just three.
So what, two halves of that, like.
So you can extend the payment plan period, too?
Yeah.
I am very much of a person that really wants us to be as generous as possible, but do keep in mind that you could open, open up something here, too.
Well, I think it's, I think as long as we're, you know, we're, 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 well, I don't technically vote, but the council votes on these new credits. And so it's kind of a case-by-case basis. I understand opening ourselves up to that, but we're just still reviewing each case.
You're only reviewing them at a certain threshold, definitely, right, like two?
Ian?
I have two questions. Uh, the first one is, if I'm hearing you correctly, this nine-fifty-seven thirty-two that's being proposed is, will refund one hundred percent of the, what she was charged for those first two months?
Yes.
So then the third month?
She would owe.
And that, and that's not significant in our, I guess it is a good feeling. Uh, do we have a dollar value on that one?
Um, I, I haven't, I haven't done the calculations on that one. I seem to recall that that one, the November one, this is the, oh, oh, that's the one thing. Um, the November one, is it sitting on here? I don't think it is. So I don't have something that I could, oh, yeah, wait, yeah, the November one, it was eighty-six-hundred. So it technically was more water consumption than the September one.
What was the deal?
Well, I'm looking at the consumption. So the consumption in November was eighty, almost eighty-seven-hundred cubic feet, and the one in September was only twenty-five-hundred.
Wow.
So it is, they are two different. But again, I only can address what was applied for. So I, the temptation is, which I wanted to, but I did not know that that November one existed in that frame of time. So.
And they have to be.
Yeah. And that has to be two consecutive months, sort of policies.
I, I see.
So essentially that eliminates.
That's why you chose those two months instead of the other two.
Yeah. People who are filling a swimming pool, right? Like.
Sure.
And sometimes we forget we do things, by the way. They require a lot of time because the time lapses, you know? And so the two consecutive, I, I mean, I didn't create that this policy's been around in the public since in many cities, right? But the two consecutive usually helps you to understand that there is a leak. Now that we have more technology, though, we can see that the leaks exist, we can essentially look at the meters and know every moment that they're using water. So that can also help you determine a leak. Like, you can see, you know, between 1:00 PM and 3:00 PM. Oh, yeah, I did those when I was twelve. But like 1:00 AM to 3:00 AM, that's kind of weird, but you always have like the detection of usage when it's a leak. There's always something going. So anyways, that's maybe too much information.
Ian?
So I guess my thought would be, because I'm inclined to agree with Jim on being generous. However, it seems to me like that we're giving them the prepared back one hundred percent of the majority of it. So I guess what we need to decide now is, at least it seems like in my mind, that we need to decide whether or not we need to address November as well and whether or not that's worth it. Like, is it, was it, was it significantly, I mean, it seems to be significantly more than all the other months that this account uses. It's like, I think eight-hundred or something was the highest on some of the other months. So that seems like, and it's November, so it's not like she, I hope that she wasn't doing it.
Maybe a hot tub.
So I don't know what to think about that part, but that's. So I don't know what to think about that part, but the, that's.
But you wanna keep the, so you have the credit for those two, and then maybe provide half of the credit for November, something like that. So pay all of it for September, October, and then pay half of November, provide that credit, I suppose.
Am I still, okay, the, the only reason I say that, I should have completed the thought, is because it, I read the letter as well, and I installed and/or helped install or helped move or shut off probably thousands of spouts. Uh, me, hold meters with the city guys and put it in, we're not supposed to as plumbers, but sometimes they just let us do it if they're standing right there. So the, I understand that, like, if we were installing something into an underground box or a limited space, that maybe our guys broke it, maybe they didn't, I don't know. But the leak happened after the meter was installed. I wasn't there, I don't know who looked at it or investigated it, I mean, Harry might have, but, or somebody. But, uh, I mean, I guess the circumstances surrounding it wasn't quite enough for me to kind of make a decision, I think. It's, but again, I'm inclined to be with Jim on this one. It's just to be as, I guess, generous as possible, seeing as that it might be our fault, you know? Uh, I don't, I don't think it is, I'm not saying it is, but it's, I know how things go sometimes when you're working on stuff. You're like fixing this and you broke that, next thing you go fix that, you broke that next part too. So, I don't know how it's.
What was?
I'll piggyback on that. When they were installing the meters, they left the faucet on in my neighbors'. And if I hadn't noticed it and went over and turned it off, their water would have been running all day. So it is possible that there was a mistake made when the meter was installed.
Was by a third party, right, Carrie?
Yeah, it was, it, they, they were, they were, yeah. Sorry, Carrie, I understood, it wasn't their, it wasn't their third party when they were, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 I know, I remember those guys.
Well, I don't think we have a motion. Um, do we wanna, I'd like to ask for a motion as far as, call her a vote, I suppose. Uh, Ian?
I guess before we ask for a motion, are, are we, I could read on this nine fifty-seven or?
Cut it in half, I thought.
Yeah, I think I would.
Cut it in half.
Well, the credit, that nine fifty-eight is the credit.
So what, what's, what does she owe now, nine hundred fifty-seven thirty-two, right?
The total amount that she has left, that's, the total amount she owes on her account, I, I do not have that figure. I can tell you, because, um, that, that's probably giving you some information that is gonna speak to too much about her payment history, so I have to be kind of guarded there. The, but what the, the nine hundred fifty-seven dollars does, so the total cost of that leak was nineteen hundred dollars and some change.
Thirty-two cents.
So we already applied a credit of nine hundred and fifty, fifty-eight dollars.
Sixty-six cents.
And so the, we would be applying the rest of that credit to, to basically remove the nineteen hundred dollars, which is the cost of the leak.
So we would be awarding her another leak credit?
Yes, yeah, we'd be washing out all of those two months for that leak.
And then, but she would still owe November?
Yes, she would still have to pay for November.
That's what I was trying to, we can keep discussion, I was trying, trying to get to for a motion as far as if somebody had an idea of how much we should credit, but who, like you're talking about.
But that's deducted from what her normal usage would have been.
Yes, yeah, so when we figure out her credit, we take what her average consumption is, subtract it from the total amount of consumption, and then the difference is what's considered the leak.
So. So was that, was that a question to cut the other nine hundred and half?
The November?
And then take what, like thirty bucks a month payments?
You've got a couple options. You could give her more of a credit, basically she wouldn't owe anything for those two months, you could cut.
For the over, for the overage?
For the overage, yes, for the overage, you could give her four hundred of a credit, so then she owes only four hundred. Yeah, you could, you know, you could pay, you could give her a credit.
Seventy-five percent of the credit.
Or you could give her a credit.
Seventy-five percent of the used income.
You could give her credit for the two months, and she wouldn't owe anything, and then hardly owe a credit for November two, since that one over. I think you got, you got a couple options here. Ian?
So if I'm reading this correctly, if we reduce the nine fifty-seven, that brings the November, or sorry, the, the two months before November down to zero, uh, which would mean she's just paying for the eight thousand units, or what is it, eight thousand?
Six hundred seventy-four.
Mm-hmm, for November.
Usage, the usage, I'm not sure what this, what that number dictates, like down or whatever. But if we reduce, um, uh, let's see, October and September to zero, by accepting this, then I, to me, it seems acceptable that she's accepting some of the responsibility for this leak, that honestly, she should have known it's going on for over a month. And, and then also to, the, they were already crediting back, if we were to, to credit back the nine fifty-seven, now, I think that would be her being able to take responsibility for the water usage that she does have and the leak, that's my thoughts.
Go add a credit of nine fifty-seven?
Just the nine fifty-seven.
Yeah, and then that would pay for the, for the building, when we get all that, whatever she, whatever November is. So she won't owe either for September, October, and then she'll just owe November, which is still.
And November's still considerable, it's like six hundred dollars.
Oh, like, Ian was saying by that point, the third month of it.
I'm looking at the usage here, it's pretty obvious, something got caught, I mean, in October, whatever these numbers, how you, how you work, uh, twenty-three thousand eight hundred and thirty-five was what she used that month. And the month prior, she used two thousand five hundred and forty, and then even the next month, in November, she used eight thousand six hundred and seventy-four, and I don't know when the leak was caught, but bottom line is, after that, her numbers are minuscule, two hundred fifty-two, two hundred twenty-four, one fifty-four, one fifty-five. So she's obviously, uh.
Repairing it.
Yeah, have made some fixes to that, but kind of the loss is to, how to apply it. Other than, I just, yeah, I have a lot of sympathy for, and if we can help her out in some way, please, someone else figure out how to apply some ruling to, uh, help her to, now basically go bankrupt, help her to be able to pay to eat, have some food.
Yvonne, what's the exact number that?
The exact number, come on, make sure she knows, she's gotta be saying.
No, I just meant the exact number, um, that she owes, so, because we got the nine hundred fifty-eight leak credit, so the one's remaining.
Well, so.
There's that.
But you're talking about the wrong thing. No one cares, we should not care about how much she owes in total. This is a leak credit, not a all water usage credit. So Yvonne has calculated the nine hundred fifty-eight sixty-six plus the nine fifty-seven thirty-two. Add those together, that's the total cost for the usage that is, we are considering the overage. She still needs to pay for what we have been for regular usage, based on the prior year's average for those months. So we should be not asking how much she owes total, but just looking at that nineteen hundred or going in over her overage. I don't want to go about that, but.
Let me restate that, let me restate that to Yvonne. Yvonne, for the month of November, which you did not have calculated, if you take the usage for November minus her normal day, monthly usage, what is the remainder that she would have been proposed over?
Okay, let's, let me tell you this, so those two months, the twenty-four hundred, twenty-three hundred cubic feet of water and the twenty-four hundred cubic feet of water, the total for those two months was two thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars in water. So if we subtract the nine fifty-eight that's already been taken away, that's left her balance for those two months for water at one thousand one fifty-nine ninety-one. So if we're gonna subtract another nine fifty-seven, then it leaves her balance at two hundred two ninety-one.
Okay, and they've already received a leak credit, so as far as this motion goes, if we wanna move to approve a leak credit, in the amount of?
Nine fifty-seven, so be the other half. So I can only, Heidi and I can only do what the city has in place for a leak credit, which is half the cost of the leak for those two consecutive months. So that's why we're here, if, to find out how much more you will do up to the other half of the cost.
Because we gotta, we gotta prove more, but so far, she's already been given a leak credit, but it's up to us, we wanna give her more.
Yes, and so usually the meaning behind the policies have been, because you get that initial bill and you're expected to freak out and come down to City Hall and say, what the heck is happening here, right? And so then you're supposed to start working on, figuring out a solution to the problem. And so when there's two months, usually people look at that and say, what, you know, what, why have you been motivated to fix something? But usually that also is the motivation, like, they think that there is maybe something crazy that happened that first month, then on the second month. And I think, again, not trying to be a jerk here, but that's all, that's the, the ideas behind leak credits. The other piece behind leak credits is that there was still water usage, which requires labor and chemicals and testing, uh, the pumps that do it all, right? So there is some cost still associated with the production of the water, water is not free. So anyway, again, trying not to be a jerk, but there is some, um, even just having a leak credit is amazing, that cities do that.
Right.
Yeah, so just keep that in mind, I'll, it's a part of it, whatever happens, if you feel like I should add some background.
I would make a motion that we credit this customer eight hundred dollars more, they've already got nine hundred and fifty-eight.
Okay, so, all right, first and second, any discussion? All right, all in favor? All right, it's Ian, it's, all right, there we go.
Good, that helps her out, that helps me out.
Thank you, people. Straight number.
Um, okay, okay, so new business, um, Hometown Days sponsorship. Heidi, do you wanna talk about this?
Well, I think I already got my memo, is there any questions for me? This is the, uh, what's a flyer that went out to the Rotary Center, called All Businesses?
Yes, Jim.
Businesses, yes. And so they previously have, um, asked for donors at different, for different events, including for Hometown Days, movies that they do, et cetera. But this time around, they're seeing it just asking for once, uh, one time, essentially, including a year. And you get sponsorship and whatever, all those benefits at all these different events here. And they're showing that, all the different events that they do on the back of the community. So the question at hand is, I listed out, uh, all the ways that the city helps with the sponsorship, the Hometown Days, and some of these are not always monetary donations, um, but they are, you know, all those cost, like foregoing other activities, right? So essentially, I could be doing something else, but I'm doing this instead. Again, I'm not trying to be a jerk here, this is just a report, right? And so the council is being asked if you want to become one of these event, uh, one of these, what do they, event supporter, community contributor, overachiever, or community all-star, and so you're being asked for this.
That's an annual, um, yeah, this is an annual way, but this doesn't, so the other thing is, is that the city council has awarded, I should have looked, if it was one or two different times in the years before for the movies and the fall. So that doesn't eliminate them or you from having, yeah, or having that conversation with the Rotary, like, this isn't where we wanna give our money yet.
Yeah. Well, you said it is all monetary, but yes, it is, you just don't have the figures on it, you know, how much, how much the police coordination and coverage is gonna cost? And you don't know the, the maps and flyers for the city water and sewer bill. But there's already one figure there, twenty-five hundred dollars, the city has said, yeah, we'll do it. And on top of that, we're supposed to, on top of that, and all the other things you've got here, the city is supposed to kick in even more money? I mean, I'm, I'm part of the Rotary and I'm part of the Hometown Days, maybe. But, uh, I think they're looking for some, some free money, but, yeah, it'd be useful. But we've already given them a whole bunch here, that they're not really getting this credit for it, because they don't see it, it's, it's money, they see it as all people working, that we're paying.
There's also the library showing up too.
Yes, I know.
Uh, Ian?
I agree a hundred percent with what Jim just said. The only thing I would add is, I'm curious as to, this does say that the request was to provide financial support, support to Sherwood Rotary. The, the, the city has requested to provide financial support to Sherwood Rotary. Who made that request?
Uh, verbally it was to me, but also in the mail, can you see this?
Okay. Um, so what I would add to that question, after I hit that question, is that if they wanted us to donate this money, I would expect them to show up at a meeting and ask for it.
Well, that would fall maybe on me, I don't know that I made the invitation, so if you could remove that, they could, if you could remove that, or we could bring this back, and I could ask if they wanna send somebody.
Okay.
So.
Lucy?
So I just need to do a little bit of clarification, it says in the following ways, does that mean you've done every one of those? Or you picked one, one year, one the other year, something like that? Or have you done all those one, two, three, four, five, six things every year?
Annually, annually.
Since I've been here. Well, I just meant, well, annually, but then it says in the following ways, so I wasn't sure if they just kept doing randomly one or two?
All of that.
All of that?
Yeah, I also help with the, uh, maps sometimes. I mean, there's like lots of little things, you know, like the Houdaw permit, bears.
If you've done all of those little bullet points right there, I would go back to the Rotary and say, where's my pre-advertising?
Well, it's not a pre-advertising.
Well, well, no, but I mean, they've not been zooming in the advertising, you know, put something out there that the city's a good guy.
I'm trying to say it's not just me, it's also like with, it's a lot of.
Well, you know, what if you want to incorporate it into it for that much money?
Who's?
The way I'm looking at this, we actually would spend less if we were a community all-star. At a thousand dollars, it's like, here's your donation, yeah. I mean, really, what, am I hearing this wrong? I mean, if they want a donation, let's go with community all-star.
Well, you've already done it.
I can break somebody in if you would present it or.
Jim, were you gonna be here with that?
I've already said, I mean, it just, the twenty-five hundred dollars just stands out all by itself, even without all the other costs that we can't see.
Yep, yep.
So, uh, yeah, it's a great, you know, Hometown Days is our biggest event of the year, and it's important that the city has things that look good, and if people come visit here, say, hey, you're pretty cool, we like this place. We're already, you know, providing the, uh, you know, blocking off the streets and the police, taking care of business, grunts, et cetera, and, uh, yeah. I don't, I can't be the one to come and say, hey, give us a hundred thousand dollars, I can't do that.
Yeah. So Jim kinda asked you a question, do, does the Rotary do something in the form of some kind of big acknowledgement to the city every year for everything they do on that list, because I didn't know we were doing that?
No, they do not, but that's their, that's the program, is to jump in as a, uh, event supporter, community contributor, overachiever. And so basically, um, as I would put it, advertising, you get your, your company logo, which would be the city of Sheridan, on our sponsor board near the car at every event, your company logo will be on the big screen at every, any use of screen. Your company will get a shout-out at every event that has a microphone. And, uh, one of the food items that are sold in the car will be named after you, so we can have the city of Sheridan popsicles, hi.
Here we go.
Yeah, whatever, and I, I have problems with that.
All right, uh, Ian?
Quickly, if I'm wrong here, but doesn't the Rotary benefit financially from Hometown Days anyway, through their food carts?
It's a, it's a fifty-fifty operation, because they're gonna put out a lot of money, that's for sure. But they, they do get money back, you're right, because they have, uh, their, uh, food trailer, but, uh, and I don't believe, truthfully, just from what I've seen, they don't have the figures in front of me, they don't make back as much as they put out. But throughout the year, they do get more money back into the, and then one thing, they all. And then one thing they always, always say at the Rotary is, all of the money they get goes back into the community next year, and you can see on the back of this uh. Flyer, all the different things that they do, and it, yeah, they do a lot of good things for uh the city and try and bring people in, et cetera. But uh, you know, so to say that they they're being over greedy, I, you know, I can't say that either, but. It just seems like a lot more money than uh we're already giving them to ask for more, so that does seem a little surprising.
The Rotary is composed of a lot of true givers to the community, every Wednesday they get together and they really do a lot, and it is a nonprofit. And each one of those people in there gives money, like, you know, I was asked to be a part of the Rotary when I came in as city manager, it's one of the things the city council wanted to see. And it was funny, cause I sat in there and I'm like, what do you mean, we spend this wheel and we all get a bunch of money, you know? So it's a very, it's a very good, it's a very good group, it's a very loving and kind group, it does do a lot of really good generous things in the community. And when people really do have trouble, they step up to the plate and they find ways to help people. They're working really hard for kids at the school district right now too, you know, putting together backpacks and helping the school supply, like. Hope that this church United helps with the school supplies, but anyways, these are uh very good and a wonderful of volunteers, big giant hearts. So I also want them to know that we appreciate them very much, all the individuals, individually and as a collective.
Yeah, for the school.
Lots of weekends.
They did a coat drive. They gave up art, I mean, you just wanted a personal, I just, I I brought all the coats up there, there was a lot. Okay, who had their hand up first?
I think Ian.
Yeah. Ian, go ahead.
Can we even afford to give the thousand dollars away, we were just told that we need to cut from the mainline budget. And this is not a grant request, this is a donation request. So I'm, I guess I'm curious as to whether or not we can have that money to give away.
So kind of out of your ending of your community development.
That's what I was gonna ask. Have they applied for the community grant, community development grant?
We've given two, I believe.
So I thought, but I'm sure it was true.
Uh Roxy, do you wanna ask?
He makes. No, I don't wanna ask, but I'm looking to do, and of course I don't have exact numbers, but I'm just trying to look at adding up all of those bullets. And I can't help but think that that would equal more than five thousand dollars right there, plus the grants we've already given them.
Probably with a number of employees, this was up to Saturday, it's overtime.
So, uh I don't, I'm thinking that's conservative, but um.
So.
Like giving them two grants already also.
Um, okay.
Well, we gave the garden club two grants too, and then three or four people, this is community for the whole town. So I uh.
But I'm just saying.
I'm all for giving them the money.
Community guard.
Jim, uh to follow up on what Heidi just said, she's right. I mean, they're giving two one thousand other type scholarships this year to one to Willmotta High School, one to Sheridan High School. They uh, I can't even name all the things they do, they do a lot, a lot of things, however. They're requesting this as a hometown days donation. We know they're calling it a sponsorship, but we know they did put this in here because uh they didn't wanna wait too much for after hometown days. So I. They're a great organization, I support them, I'm supposed to, they do collect uh quarterly uh feeds from the members. So they aren't, they aren't losing money, but I'm sure they could use the number thousand dollars to help, but. I just don't think, especially with our budget, the way it is, that it should be us that has to pay the pay price.
Something we can do too is just table this till June third and have somebody come in and kind of better exchange what they're asking, if that's something people would. Would like, we wanna give it a little bit more info.
Yeah, I'll be here.
Does that sound okay?
Yeah, I'll put together, uh just real roughly, if you gave away all the grants left for this next quarter, which is twenty five hundred dollars. You still have nine hundred and eight dollars in the community development line. And then Yvonne made up a good, or said a good thing too, which could be dues and memberships, there's still twelve hundred dollars in that life here, so.
So we could technically give them a thousand, probably.
Yes, but keep in mind, everything you don't spend rolls into the next year, so. But yes, frozen counts of everything.
Do we need a vote table or a way to table?
I would just love to do whatever it takes to stop talking about this.
Okay, next, uh Heidi, your report.
Okay, once again, any questions?
Jim? I have one about the uh the footbridge here. This footbridge must really be something that they'd find that they couldn't have hired somebody locally to uh just build this bridge. I mean, the total cost is ninety six hundred dollars for a footbridge, which it probably looks pretty cool, I mean, I don't doubt that. But it just seems like an awful lot when it may have been built locally at a lesser cost.
Well, so part of the problem has been avoiding wetlands, so that's why we went with a rail, a railroad cart. And the railroad cart comes from somebody local, believe it or not, they were very excited and gave it discount to the city of Sheridan. Cause he loves Sheridan, so local meaning, I think like a bit thirty miles, Gary knows where he's from. So any, so it did come pretty locally, I know, Gary, you.
He's from Lebanon.
Oh, he's from Lebanon, but he does work in Sheridan?
Yeah, he does a lot of work on uh the rail line right here.
Yeah.
For uh for Union Pacific and uh Tennessee Wyoming.
So that's the first payment, but it's all grant money too, and this was awarded as part of a grant. And uh but avoiding the wetlands has been the largest issue with this, and so building a bridge. In a lot of ways, with other ways require what's called in water work, which gets very expensive and very kind of consuming. Because you have to go through the army corps of engineers as well.
That answer, that is.
This is efficient.
It couldn't be built.
It could be, but it wouldn't be easy. At first, our public works guys were like, we're so excited to build a bridge, and then when we started to peel that onion back, it's a good thing that I've asked for a lot of money to build that some bridge part of it, so.
Bramble here, it it uh, is that the reason that uh you put a holding tank in versus a septic tank with field because of what, what you said?
Yeah, I just call them septic tanks, cause I used that word, you know, that's right, I'm always like, it's always was meant to be a holding tank. Because we can't get sewer over there, but we also wouldn't want to do a leach field anywhere in a park.
I do wanna have that one up.
And.
More.
A lot of wetlands over there.
Any other questions, right?
Um cleanup day, uh so far I have the sponsor, Lucy, not the sponsor, helpers, Lucy, Ian, Liz, and Kale. Kale's at the front gate collecting donations.
I mean, I'm going, or that's where I was told already.
Unless like tradition for the mayor to be there, I think the last few years, or Roxy has been there too, so maybe she'll come.
I was at the front gate last year.
You were with mayor.
Yeah.
Yes, yep, and so we um.
Are making it official.
I'll be at the middle dumpster. Yes. So I'll get out a map to you, um, we'll get out a map to you, and you guys can pick where you wanna be, really.
I wanna be at the front gate, cause there's no lifting.
There's also no lifting at the area that is where you. Yeah, yeah, but we take fluorescent lights and people just put those in there and the E waste, and the biggest thing with the E waste is just to make sure that you um have the background to understand what is E waste and what is not E waste. So, but there's no lifting with that one either.
I can be at the front, but also just be like at large or wherever.
You can probably, Kale can probably go somewhere else at least.
Yeah, I could survive last year.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Roxy?
I can only be there half the day.
Okay, you have it. You two can split the.
Well, or Liz can be there too.
Well, yeah, it's best to have two, so you.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
Cause there's oftentimes two.
And that donation is, that makes sense. I would want Liz to have to lift it.
No, hopefully it's not. So uh. I forgot, but anyways, it is from twelve, like eight AM to twelve PM. We are very, very happy that the school district continues to let us use that Barbara Roberts School. Sounds like in the near future, we may not be able to, but it is a really good layout and it is very different than cleanup day, the litter patrol, this is nothing to do with litter patrol. This has everything to do with cleaning up your your property and getting things out of there. Another way really that the city helps to support people is this is a free event, but it is because paid with um with city residents money, it is only for city residents. And so actually a water bill is a really good way to show that.
And they have to bring ID to the gate and show us that they're.
But they have to be, yeah, not outside of the city.
Yeah.
Right.
Is city meddling.
I do have one question about that real quick, is uh there was some confusion I saw from some people that were asking. Who are taxpayers allowed, and like who's paying for it and then who's allowed to come? Is it just residents of the city or people that are taxpayers that may live just outside of the city?
We don't have any taxpayers outside the city.
Or for this amount?
No, we don't collect any taxes outside the city.
That goes to the killing.
That's.
Right. What I'm saying is the city is paying for the stuff.
Yes.
Got it.
So the city is paying.
And just a little FYI, that's why they ask for the water bill, so if anybody gets the bank key.
Yeah.
You need to bring your water bill, you know, because you can't be holding stuff for the neighbor over in Grand Round or Willmotta or outside.
Yeah.
But I guess they could.
Or your driver's license if that's your address.
Yeah, but lots of people have an address that says Sheridan and they're not in our city, right? So like if you live out like, yeah, Gopher Valley.
Oh, I see, it's public address, but it's not the city. I s- I, yeah, I get it.
So a water bill's really good, if you don't get a paper water bill, you get them on your phone, just show it.
Okay, any other questions? Just give us a little. All right, so second public comment period, have you got any?
I don't have any new cards.
Okay.
I guess we can more final. Why, do I fill out as a card or?
Is it about the same subject?
I just want, I just wanna thank them for people who know on it.
Well, there we go.
Okay. Okay, uh all right, mayor, council comments, I'm, I wanna get out of here before ten.
Okay.
I'll put up this stat. Comment. Um, anybody have anything?
I promise that we won't go to ten. Um Heidi, when is the meeting with the owner of the Hyder, Hyder Building?
I have just regular communication, is there something you'd like me to relate to him?
No, I was just wondering, in your, your um, in your level or what you're called. In your report, you said that you were having a meeting with him, and I was just wondering when that was or if there was.
I have had one, I had had a phone interview or a.
Okay, all right.
Uh Jim, um this is a rumor, so that way you can deny it or uh agree to it. That uh one of the two owners of one oh six South Bridge is sold out to his partner, is that true?
I have no information to say if that is true or false.
I don't, either.
I have heard it, but I do not know.
I can. You guys probably talk about that after.
Um, okay, anybody else?
Um, I guess I can share something with you, but. So the US Bank got an offer on it. Yay, so there you go, stay tuned.
Well, that was fast. That's good. Well, now with the, the, so an offer to, for someone to buy it, or an offer for like someone?
There's been an accepted offer, I was showing it to somebody also.
Okay.
And um, you know, no offense, Portland villagers are just, you know, evasive. They waited long enough to make sure that their offer got in, and then they said, oh, by the way, I was doing a second showing, they said we got an accepted offer on the property. So, but the medical clinic is either for lease or for sale also. Four hundred and eighty five thousand. Or three two hundred a month to Lisa.
How much?
Four hundred and eighty five thousand.
For the.
Or twenty two hundred to Lisa.
I. I just. Another conspiracy, Liam. It's not gonna be very popular with two people, but um I would like to revisit the council meeting time, start time. Because when we talked about that before, two of you were opposed to it because of your businesses, but you're self-employed. And I would think being self-employed, you could dictate your own hours, and therefore if we could start one half hour earlier, we'd get out of here a little bit earlier. And there are people that have to drive to Salem and home a long way. And I have to go home and go to bed, so, but seriously, would you please consider starting at six thirty at two days a month? And just close up shop a little early, Lucy, you could go in a little earlier on those days.
Why don't you just put it up for a vote, I'm not gonna vote for it, but you guys, it's toward it too, it's a no brainer, vote on it.
Well, it's.
I'm not going to, but vote, I literally came from my office here tonight, I was tired.
I know, what time did you get, what time did you get to your office, tell the truth?
I got up at seven o'clock this morning to be at an appointment.
No, what time did you get to your office, that wasn't, that didn't answer the question.
I didn't get to my office until eleven thirty.
We can, we can talk about it uh next meeting and vote on it maybe next.
Okay.
Roxy?
I'll make one point, when you're self-employed, you have to be there when you have to be there, not when you wanna be.
Oh.
That's true.
Oh, even.
Great, any, thank you.
That sounds like a two third conversation.
Good one, get out of there.
Right, uh well, that it, okay, well, if there's anything else, then we.
I made a motion to adjourn.
Right, exactly. All right, uh all in favor?
Yes.
I don't vote. Uh, we are.
You got excited about.
Uh, okay, we're adjourned, that's forty six.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
If you quick question, we need a chance.